Good evening. I'd like to call the board of the sixth city council meeting. Please stand up. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, bless us all. Give us the wisdom to make the right decisions tonight. God bless our men and women in armed services and bring them home safe. Amen.
Thank you, Mel. Go call members.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Morrow.
Here.
Councilmember Olson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Ponce.
Here.
And Mayor Kennedy.
Here. Nathan Mattel in the room? Nathan, stand up, young man. The city would like to acknowledge Nathan's several years of service to the city of Avalon. He jumped in the role of head mechanic at the city garage and squarely a lot of our fire apparatus, got our street sweeper back up on the road and doing his thing. Unfortunately, I didn't know about this until the meeting started. He was also responsible for cutting down a tree that wasn't owned by the city. On that note, I think it'd be appropriate for us to order you an app. You know, Nathan was a kid that grew up on the island and was very resourceful in turning our garage around and getting it headed in the right direction. So Nathan, I would have to say we would like to thank you for those efforts. Nathan will be having a going away party tomorrow at the sand trap from five p.m. till closing. Nathan's intent is to leave the island and pursue higher education and getting his product's life. Nathan, thank you for all your efforts.
Do you want to come up and say a couple words?
Fair speech.
Perfect. Thank you, Nathan. Excellent. Okay, also this evening, we would like to recognize Dr. Denny. Is he running late? Then we're going to put that one off for a moment. Let's move on to U.S. Foods. Anyone here representing U.S. Foods yet this evening? Beautiful, come on up.
U.S. Foods first.
U.S. Foods first.
Michelle's in a minute. We'll do U.S. Foods first.
U.S. Foods first.
Well, you know what, it could be both proclamations. Just make this easy.
After you, Michael.
A proclamation of the city council of the city of Avalon honoring Michelle Iscardis for her donation and service to the city during its centennial celebration. Whereas the city of Avalon celebrated the centennial of its incorporation with a week-long celebration in June of 2013, and while planning the centennial celebration, residents expressed their desire to bring back the historic fish fry event on Crescent Avenue. As the territory manager for U.S. Foods, Michelle extended an offer of her company to donate all of the food and necessary goods to serve hundreds of residents a fish fry meal. Michelle not only helped plan and offer advices to the logistics of the event, but she also coordinated the line of volunteer servers preparing the food the day of the fish fry event. Always willing to go the extra mile, Michelle helped serve the crowd that came out to enjoy the evening, which stretched the city block. With her can-do attitude and calm demeanor, Michelle showed genuine love for the city and its people. Whereas we commend and applaud Michelle and U.S. Foods for their contribution to the community of Avalon, and whereas the city of Avalon wishes to recognize Michelle Iscardis and believes she exemplifies true community spirit, now therefore, we, the city council of the city of Avalon, do hereby recognize and thank Michelle Iscardis for her outstanding service and dedication, dated the 6th of August, 2013.
We've got one more for you, though. It's different. It's not the same. This is a proclamation of the city council of the city of Avalon honoring U.S. Foods for its donation to the city during its centennial celebration. Whereas the city of Avalon celebrated its centennial of its incorporation on June 26, 2013, and whereas the city and its residents take great pride in their community and the history it found here, and whereas the residents of Avalon have a great fondness for the community fish fry events that once took place on the waterfront, and whereas U.S. Foods has distributed food and other goods in Avalon in its restaurants and the businesses has become an integral part of the local economy, and whereas U.S. Foods donated 100% of the food and paper products for the centennial fish fry event on Crescent Avenue in recognition of Avalon's 100th day, and whereas we commend and applaud U.S. Foods for their contribution to the community of Avalon, and whereas the city of Avalon wishes to recognize U.S. Foods and believes their organization exemplified true community spirit, now therefore, we, the city council of the city of Avalon, do hereby recognize and thank U.S. Foods for its outstanding service and dedication, dated the 6th of August, 2013. Good job. Still in the room? Ron Height with Southern California Edison is going to give us an update on water.
Good evening, council. So all I wanted to really do was update you and the community on the fact that the reservoir level is now down to 476 acre feet. For reference, full is 1,000 acre feet. Phase one restrictions begin at 600 acre feet. Phase two restrictions and rationing begins at 300 acre feet. We're currently at 476. The community is currently using an average of about 35 acre feet per month. So assuming that we stay on par with what the community is using currently, that would put us in approximately January when we have the potential of hitting phase two rationing. Of course, that's assuming worst case that we get no rain between now and January. The D-SAL plant will slow that a little bit. The D-SAL plant is online producing 200,000 gallons of water a day, which equates to approximately 15 acre feet. I think the two things we need, or actually, one thing we need to do here is remind the community of the importance of conservation. So we publish in the newspapers quite frequently a lot of tips on what to do to conserve water. And we want to remind everyone to take those tips into their daily routines in how they wash their dishes and how they wash their carts and everything else. Because at 35 acre feet, as you can see, that we're headed to phase two rather quickly. Any questions?
Ron, is the D-SAL system running?
The D-SAL plant is running, that's correct. So that will help offset some of this and slow down the degradation in the level in the reservoir. Remember, it doesn't add water. What it does is it slows down the amount of water that we use out of our aquifer in our reservoir.
Is it running at capacity?
Yes. We had one unit down for a leak, or actually, we sheared a shaft coming off the motor, but that's been replaced and we're putting the unit back online. So it was down, partial output for a couple of days, and it's now back up and running.
Anyone in the audience have any questions, Ron?
Yes, I'll let you guys or Denise answer that because it is in the Avalon municipal code.
There's supposed to be a penalty for that. Code enforcement's supposed to enforce water abuse. We need a We-Tip hotline.
A Water Tip Hotline?
Ron, have you sent anything out to the rate payers about water rationing and to the restaurants about serving water? I mean, the whole program, have you sent those out to them?
We have, and we've also been to all the restaurants and the hotels, and we've taken the little cards that sit on the tables that remind the customers of rationing. And on the hotels, I think they were stickers to go on the mirrors to remind the hotel tourists of the importance of rationing as well. Bob, the point you brought up about a hotline, that is a question I get asked quite frequently. If someone witnesses something that perhaps is not in line with the tariffs and/or municipal code related to conservation, where should they go?
During the hours that city halls open, we'll just fill those calls and then we'll send code out.
If you violate the water conservation provisions of the city's ordinance, first violation is a $50 fine, and the second violation if committed within a year is a misdemeanor.
So Ron, you mentioned that the D-SAL plant is producing 15 acre feet. Is that the number you used?
Yeah, it produces 200,000 gallons a day. And so if you calculate that out over 30 days, it's approximately, actually, between, it's actually 18 acre feet per month over a 30-day period.
Okay.
So you take away the 35 acre feet we're currently using, take 18 off of that is what we anticipate using over the next few months, as the D-SAL plant offsets some of the usage.
Hey, Ron, is there any plan, since the reservoir's so low, to do any dredging or anything like that, taking some of the fill out of that?
We looked at that a number of years ago, and here's what it comes down to, is the reservoir, that's not the water we're actually using, we're using it out of the aquifer that's underground adjacent to that. The idea of dredging, because there's a lot of silt at the bottom of that reservoir, the impact to that, or the benefit-to-cost ratio is just not there. Because where it gets really expensive is we can't just take that silt and that soil out and dump it on the side of the reservoir. We have to remove it from the island. So you're talking about millions and millions of dollars to gain a little deeper reservoir that is actually just a level gauge to what's in the aquifer. We found money is going to be better well-spent, better spent on focusing on developing more wells. And so we've researched and found that, you know, where some potential opportunities are to develop more wells for additional water.
And is your intention, then, to put those additional wells into play in short order, or is that something that's still being factored?
It's still being factored because as of today, even though it may not seem like it because we're in phase one, we actually have been doing a really good job in meeting the needs of the community with the resources we've got. We are outside, above the rationing line 75% of the time and below the rationing line 25% of the time. If you look at industry standards, that's about right. Because if we were in rationing more often than that, obviously, we won't have enough water. But if we're never going to rationing, we perhaps aren't giving enough away, and we're stalling development. So it's about the right ratio, and if you look at the past 10 years, that's right where we're at. So we're meeting the needs of the community today. If things change and we have significant developments coming aboard, as you know, there are some being planned, we'll have to look at a few options. And one of those options are, is that developer helping fund a new resource, such as how we got the D-SAL plant years ago. What I've done so far is validate the fact that there are opportunities, there are resources out there. It's a matter of where the funding comes from to support these large projects.
Well, recognizing that money really solves the problem, I want to take exception to a couple of statements you made, though. And don't understand, I'm not trying to, you know, kill everything you're trying to say here, and it's not, don't kill the messenger. You were asked to come here and give us a water update, and that's all I really expected, but let me share some frustration. Edison's goal and objective in providing our community with water is a safe, reliable, and plentiful source. Okay? You made a statement a moment ago that says that you're meeting that demand, but we're not meeting that demand when we're asking residents to use less water. Let's use the statement that was made earlier about washing golf carts. I think it's completely reasonable to expect somebody to wash an asset of theirs to protect that asset. Would you not agree?
I agree.
So when we're asking somebody not to do that, we're not able to meet the demand that the citizens have been requiring. And the reason I take objection to that is I recognize and realize that it costs Southern California Edison a pretty good chunk of change to run the D-SAL plant. It was down for an extended period of time for maintenance. I recognize that it needs to be maintained. I'm not asking Southern California Edison not to maintain that asset. But at the same time, we're not running the D-SAL plant, and it's part of the equation of our safe annual yield. It's already in the numbers of what we're expecting to be able to produce with that equipment. At the same time, we have a whole bunch of water allocation permits that are out there in quote-unquote limbo, assuming that that water was going to be used at some point in time. Had those building development permits been issued and that water actually be consumed, where would we be? When we make a comparison to other locations, you know, I recognize that the state of California is in a water problem. We have, you've mentioned here tonight that we have D-SAL assets that weren't run for some period of time, we have other wells that we can tap and manage, but at the same time, we're asking the residents of Avalon to use less and not maintain their assets. To me, it seems like a management issue. And I would really like to participate in getting our hands around how we plan for the future, how we plan to not be in this position ever again. Because if the wells are there and available, what's it going to take to produce it? If the D-SAL plant needs to be maintained, let's maintain it when the reservoir is full. I mean, a lot of those things seem to be, to me, to be a little simple. So I would love to get with you at some point in time and have you kind of address those things chronologically and try to explain to me why we continue to get where we are.
Yeah, I can. And your point about, you know, it costs Edison to, you know, run the D-SAL plant or to do these things, it's the rate payer, right? We're using rate payer funds to do this, so it's a pass-through cost. I have to prudently manage rate payer funds, so there's a balance there, right? If we run that D-SAL plant all the time, rates will go up. So we try to minimize the use of that plant to the times that it's absolutely necessary because the cost is so much higher than the reservoir water.
But do we not tell the public in our rate filings that we're producing 150 acre feet of D-SAL water a year?
Actually, the safe annual yield was never officially changed. So it's 515 acre feet, so as opposed to 600, because the thought was the D-SAL plant would produce about 85. It was never officially changed. So we're basing allocation requests and approvals on 515 acre feet, which does not include the D-SAL plant.
Is the D-SAL plant is not part of our safe annual yield in today's numbers?
It is currently not.
I have a question, Bob.
Sure.
Is the Corax negotiation still ongoing?
The sale of the assets for the water and the gas utilities have been on hold pending the resolution of the rate case.
Yeah.
That rate case is in the final.
It's still there, though. Okay.
Yeah, the rate case is in the final stages of settlement discussions. Once those are resolved, we will go back and continue the process of divesting the water and gas assets to Corax.
So in conversation with Corax, they have a lot of capability to create the tertiary treated water we need to develop to get rid of the saltwater and also to do irrigation so it wouldn't impact the potable water, which will then help us also.
Yes, they have a keen interest in that.
It's, we, that's absolutely have to do that. We have no other choice. I also understand, as a result of the study that you had back some years ago, that the company you brought in indicated there was about a number of aquifers under the island, I think I heard six, that they found, but I don't know how they found it or what. So, and those other aquifers that are there, you would probably put wells to feed out of those aquifers versus the ones that we're already using?
It's, again, it's a balance of money. There's water actually very near where our current wells are. Because if you start hunting down additional aquifers, now you've got to pay for all the infrastructure to get the power to that area and the water out of that area.
Yeah, it's a function of spending a lot of money to do it, so it's probably nicer if Corax can take that over when they get in and make some investments.
No, because they use the same process we do. It's a regulated environment, so they'll use the exact same process we do. It comes down to, are we meeting the needs of the community today, or do we want to spend more of the community's money to never be in phase one restrictions?
Well, but it's pretty obvious that, you know, we have the cycles, we are on a desert island, so we're going to have the cycles. And it looks like our water usage has gone up quite a bit, and we probably need to change those levels with the PUC and make our water use instead of being 550 acre feet, maybe 700 acre feet or whatever, and then do what we need to do to solve that. Because what's happening, just the other day, I think Rock was telling me that one of our local painters can't paint the outside of houses because he uses a pressure washer and he can't use any water. So it does affect the community in a lot of ways, not to mention the fact that we have our visitors coming here and getting into a hotel where they're spending quite a bit of money and they're told to restrict themselves to the use of water. So it's a problem that we're, probably one of the growing pains we have to get into, but we really need to do it. Because there's so many things going on. People come up to me all the time and say, "How come Edison is approving all these water requests when we don't have any water?" Well, we've got the water, we just haven't tapped it, that's all. So that's probably the next thing we need to worry about because it's not going to get any worse, and who knows when it's going to rain next? But you could probably go back and look at history and see that eventually, within the next, within that 10-year period or so, it might rain a little bit. But we need a lot, so. Anyway, I'm hoping that the Corax thing goes well because they'll be motivated to do a lot of neat things to impress the community, and it'll get you back into the business that you're in everywhere else, and that's just providing power. So, anyway, I, I'm sure you're getting a lot of complaints out of the community, and this is good for everybody out there to see that, you know, where you're coming from. And then we just have to bite the bullet and have to take a good, hard look at what it's going to take to raise those numbers up, to have more capacity, to be able to not get us in a position to where we, you know, tell our people that are coming over here staying overnight that they have to be real careful and they have to take group showers and stuff like that. So sometimes it's good, but sometimes it's not. But anyway, good luck.
Tim, you have a comment?
I wasn't going to get up here, and you took a lot of the wind out of my questions.
No, just reiterate, you're right next to him.
On a fact-finding tour with Ron, we talked about an aquifer that was just south of the current aquifer, and you indicated that it was a fairly large aquifer. And I put it to you guys. If the island company or any major company wants to build, then they should put a big chunk into the drilling down into that aquifer. Before they take our water, they've got to do something to get their water for the million-dollar homes that they want to build and all the other building that they want to do. And second, I would like to urge you to do exactly what Ralph said, and that is to come up with a different formula for giving these building permits out to the various companies that want to build as soon as the water level reaches a certain point. It doesn't take a rocket scientist, and I used to say this all the time when I was on the council, that it doesn't take a rocket scientist to know that if you keep giving out these permits with the existing water supply we have, it's going to go faster and faster and faster. So I would urge you to do something with Edison and the PUC to get a different formula for giving out these building permits. And then I just wanted to ask a question to Ron. Wouldn't silt catch basins stop further silt from going into the reservoir if they were built where the valley goes down into the reservoir? And I know it's closing the barn door after the thing is filled with silt, but to stop the silt, I've seen these catch basins in other places, and I thought maybe that might help save the balance of the reservoir from filling up with silt. I just posed that question to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Thanks, Tim. So the question about the silt in the reservoir, again, nothing's lost with silt in the reservoir until the reservoir's spilling over, right? Which is very infrequent. Because all you're doing is increasing the volume that can sit in that surface water reservoir. So the millions of dollars we'd have to spend to create more room in there is just not worth it for the community.
We also use that level in the reservoir as an indicator. It doesn't necessarily mean that down below 300 or 400 feet, wherever you're into the aquifer, there isn't a whole lot of water down there. Just above, the aquifer has dropped, but maybe the aquifer is only 20% down from what it normally is. We have a lot more water, but we've used the reservoir and that level as the, as that point in which we start the regulation and different.
Well, there's been a lot of previous studies done on the correlation between the aquifer and the reservoir. I think it's a pretty good system. What we didn't know until a couple years ago was that down really deep, 400, 500 feet deep, that there's water flowing continuously under the bedrock. See, our current system just utilizes the top 60 to 80 feet of soil until the bedrock, and that's what we've been extracting water from, and that's tied to the reservoir. But we explored a couple of years ago, down deep, 450 feet, and found there's water flowing there all the time. And we did that through some, with some measurement devices, both before and after upstream and downstream of the reservoir. So there's potential there. The matter is, you know, how is this going to be funded to go do that? With the matter of these large development projects coming online, as Tim suggested, that would be the time and that's the place to then have those developers develop a resource that the island would benefit from, not just their developments.
When the city negotiates that construction contract, all that stuff will be in there, all the new infrastructure requirements that are going to have to go in to support the project, and the extra water needs and gas needs and electrical needs and all that. So that all happens before any project starts.
Right. So what we've done is we went down and identified that there is a source there. So when the time comes for that development to happen, that can be.
And Edison can support that with the water that's required.
Right.
Excellent. Well, Ron, thank you for giving us an update on where we are with water, enlightening us on other resources that may be available. We look forward to working with you on trying to extract that product out of the ground.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, Dr. Denny has hit the room, so we're going to take a moment. Dr. D, come on up.
A proclamation of the citizens of Avalon honoring Dr. Richard Denny for his years of service to the Avalon community. Whereas Dr. Richard Denny has brought an unprecedented high standard of veterinary care, compassion, and dedication to catting of pets, feral cats, and island wildlife. Whereas Dr. Denny consistently responds to health needs of all animals, whether they belong to residents or visitors, with unparalleled professionalism, cutting-edge treatments, and a comforting personal touch. Whereas Dr. Denny maintains- Whereas Dr. Denny maintains an exemplary veterinary practice to serve the public and also provide services for feral animals and wildlife as he is called upon to humanely help any creature victimized or accidentally injured. Whereas Dr. Denny is a friend of all and a valuable contributor of services to the Catalina Island Humane Society, the Catalina Island Conservancy and the boating community who rely on his excellent care to ill or injured animals, birds and marine life. Whereas Dr. Denny is a pillar of the Avalon community and represents the finest qualities of service to others, compassion and care for those in need and generosity of spirit and Admiral Island values presented to his guests, part-time visitors and residents. Now therefore, the citizens of Avalon would like to express our deepest gratitude to Dr. Richard and Annie Denny for their countless contributions and service to our community, dated the 6th day of August 2013.
I've got something to say. Doc, remember way back some years ago, you came over and talked to me and said, "I'm trying to figure out whether I should stay here or not." And I told you something like, "If you want to be devoured, stay." And you have been. I didn't tell you we were going to really appreciate it a lot. And here's a little indicator tonight. Thank you very much, you've done a great job for the community.
Do we have any other announcements this evening? Any announcements?
Yes, Miss Bat's celebration of life will be at 2:00 PM on August the 17th, starting at 2:00 PM, August the 17th, in the M. It'll be in the paper, too.
Thank you, Ralph. Do we have any written communication this evening?
We had an email today from the outriggers, which I have added to item number 18.
Okay, thank you. Okay, to our agendized presentation, we have Kerry Bub, owner of an Avalon mooring.
Bob, could we have CRNR just do a quick update so they can get on the boat?
We can. CRNR, you get to give us a quick update. I didn't have that on my list. Sorry, David, I didn't have you on my list.
No problem. Honorable Mayor, members of the council, David Ferrian, representing CRNR. With me tonight is George Lazaric, our Vice President of Governmental Relations, and Cheryl Allison, our Operations Manager for our newly formed Avalon Environmental Services. So I just want to spend a couple of minutes, we're 30 days into, you know, our new contract and I wanted to just spend a couple of minutes maybe updating you on a few of the items that we're working on, some of the things that have gone, we think, very well and some of the things that we expect to occur over the next 30 days. So the first thing I wanted to start with is that 100% of the staff that was previously with Seagull are now employees of CRNR and we're delighted about that. And because of that, I believe the transition went incredibly smooth. Cheryl and her team did just an amazing job, you know, transitioning from one day working for one company and then the next day working for our company with new equipment and a lot of things that they had to learn. So again, we just wanted to thank her and her staff for, you know, making the transition as smooth as it was. In regards to our new equipment, you've probably seen our new trucks running around. As in our proposal, they are powered by propane. They are smaller than the previous pieces of equipment that ran around the island and we think operating quieter. And so we're hopeful that that's being welcomed by the community and providing a little nicer environment. All the bins, as you've probably noticed, are plastic with the exception of the bins that are used at the compacters behind Vons. So again, that was another effort to ensure that they were quieter and more efficient. And again, those have all been deployed. In regards to our commercial trucks that are servicing the commercial businesses, primarily the restaurants, we still are dealing with some issues with when they dump, the way they dump, there's quite a bit of liquid in the bins and ensuring that that liquid transfers from the bin into the truck. That is an ongoing issue that we're still working on. We've come up with a couple of retrofits that none of which have worked exactly the way we want to. We are going to have a team here this weekend, I'm sorry, Thursday and Friday with something that we've actually manufactured that we're going to install on those trucks and we're hopeful that that's going to correct that problem. In regards to the transition at the facility, the first few days, obviously we got a little bit behind on sorting because we had a lot of safety training to do. The routes didn't get done quite as quickly as possible, as normal because of new equipment and so on. We sent a crew over last week and we've gotten that all caught up. So those things are now taken care of. As you may recall, there were some compacters owned by the previous company that actually left the island and we're actually shipping new compacters over this week that will be installed. There's six of those that'll be reinstalled at the locations that previously had compacters. They're not the ones that were owned by the city, but ones that were owned by the previous company and rented to the businesses. So those will get reinstalled. And that should help some of the efficiency of the collection where some of those businesses are used to having a compactor. We've had to install two or three bins there just to deal with their service levels. So we're anxious to get those installed. The other item we're working on and we discussed with your staff today was the oil interceptors that are being installed. There's one now at Blue Water Grill and we're in the process. We actually have a contractor we're working with and we'll be in the process of outfitting a truck to be on the island to not only serve that business establishment, but as the other restaurants come on with the new ordinance that you've implemented. So we'll be working on that. A couple of things on public relations. One of the things that was in our proposal is the ability for the residents to sign up and receive waste carts and recycling carts. And I talked with Maria Lazaric today, she heads that up for us. The postcards are in the mail and basically going out to all the residents that allow them to opt in to have carts delivered to their homes, one for trash, one for recycling and an optional one for green waste if they would like to have that. The return date on those is the 23rd of August, which that'll allow us basically to create an inventory of what we need and we will start the deliveries right after Labor Day again, trying not to be delivering carts while we're in the middle of some of your busier times. So again, we anticipate that that will all be completed by mid-September. The other thing that we'll be doing is in our contract, it requires us to provide a monthly report to the city and basically that identifies, you know, the tonnages we've collected, identifies any issues we come up with and we'll be preparing that first report for our first month and making that available to the city. And those are the few items that I had. I'm happy to answer any questions if there's anything maybe I've left out or any things you might have.
Ole, David, one of the blue bags is going to get back.
I'm going to have to check into that, Ole, because you asked me that question today and I haven't had a chance to check into that yet, but I will and get an answer to you on that.
Thanks. Yes, blue bags. Oh, they're back? Got them today.
We got them today.
Great job, David.
See how well I pulled that together? Thanks, Dudley.
Hey, Bob. I got one complaint I got already and it happened to be with the liquids you were talking about. As soon as they go up Marilla or Whitley, as soon as the trucks go up, here comes all the milk and whatever else is in there flowing out the back and dirties up the street. And during these times when we're having water issues, we're very careful about washing the streets down. And so that was the one, the only complaint. Other than that, everybody's happy.
Great, I'll look into that then, thank you.
Anyone in the audience have a question? We got you out of here and time to catch your boat.
Thank you very much. Just, you know, on behalf of our company, we're delighted to be here and, you know, please feel free, anyone in the community, if there are questions, by all means, call. We're very open door, we want to address anything that may come up. And again, we appreciate this opportunity. We look forward to a long relationship.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're ready for our presentation from Kerry Bub, owner of a mooring in Avalon Harbor. Welcome, Kerry.
Thank you, thank you council members and mayor and whatnot. And we're going to move from maybe talking about the freshwater to the trash, out to the saltwater. And my experience has been really over the years, somewhere around 1985 or '06, coming to the island for the first time and then falling in love with the island and imagining having a mooring out there one day I thought would never be possible. Well, we kept coming out here in 1996 or so, we came out and my wife said, "Look, if you want me to keep coming out here, you're going to have to buy a mooring because I don't like being out here on the hook." And I think back then, maybe there was different times in the economy that moorings were more available or less available or whatnot. So then somewhere around 2010, we bought a 50-foot mooring. We subsequently sold our 40-foot mooring and bought a little bigger boat. Our kids live here on the island during the summer, are employed here locally and it's been a part of our life, really, a big part for a long time. So today I asked to speak to the council to request consideration of having our mooring, which is mooring number 191, modified, adjusted, accommodated to potentially house or hold a little larger vessel. The reason I think it's appropriate to come here and ask for that, it's my understanding in the past, being here and owning a mooring for 16 years, that from time to time, the harbor master, through various means or processes, has granted that to certain mooring owners. And our position where our mooring is, we think it's quite reasonable to make such a request. The next reason is, is really where we're located, we think it's very conducive to this being extended. And certainly I'm here for some selfish reasons, but I'm also here for some reasons that I think would be beneficial to the city, looking at trends in the boating industry, what kind of boats people are buying and what kind of people are coming over. The good news is typically these larger vessels have water makers, so they don't impact the city, you know, for the most part. How do we turn on the projector there? So for those of you that aren't quite as familiar with the harbor, we go out there and live there quite frequently. The red arrow actually points to mooring 191. And this is the mooring map off of the Avalon City website, kind of shows all the moorings, the various rows, kind of makes it look like all the arcs in each of the rows are pretty symmetrical and evenly, you know, displaced. And this is July the 4th. July the 4th obviously is one of the busiest weeks out there. The red line is the fairway between the second row of 50-foot moorings and the 60-foot row. When you look at the mooring cans along over here, you'll actually see the 60-foot row isn't nearly as arced as perhaps the drawing on the map shows. You'll see that the ingress and regress and the various endpoints of the rows are, you know, a little bit smaller with a pretty big wide opening somewhere between mooring 181 to about 193. So there's probably about 12 moorings in this part of the harbor where possibly are capable of expanding, you know, to some degree. Here's another view from a different point up on the mountaintop. Again, you can see how the row is rather straight and a lot more emptiness between the 60s and the 50s in this part of the harbor. Over here you have another kind of odd wedge of 50-foot moorings, I think there's five or six of them. Out here you get to the 70-foot row. Here's another picture from the bell tower area. Again, one of the busiest weekends around for the season. And again, right there is the main area that we're talking about is possibly allowing a little larger vessel in that area. The other reason that we think it's appropriate is really kind of understanding how boats are measured. In the mooring ownership regulation, section 10-2.101, it defines length. It says, "Length as applied to vessels and boats shall mean the measurement set forth in the manufacturer's specification for such vessel or boat. Where the vessel has been modified, the harbor master shall determine the length of the vessel using any reasonable method. Detachable swim steps and bow pulpits shall not be included in determining length." I find that a little bit ironic and, you know, when you're buying a boat, of course, the manufacturer wants to think you're buying the biggest boat. So they'll call a 55, which really could be 45 at the swim line or the water line. So measuring boats is somewhat of a science, certainly true. I would think for the harbor and the harbor master, safetiness and all the things regarded about keeping the fairway clean, ultimately it's about, you know, do objects intrude out into the fairways? And what I find a little ironic is for whatever reason, detachable swim steps with vessels that use that for, you know, hoisting their dinghies is not relevant, but yet if you had a 55 or a 57-foot boat, that would be relevant. So at the end of the day, I think, you know, the harbor, the harbor master, the rules are certainly great for a set of guidelines, but if a boat owner were to put a 55 or a 57 and extend no longer than what these other vessels might extend, why would that be inappropriate or not allowed? There's another example out there in the harbor. What's interesting again is I could put a 50-foot, 11.99-inch boat and have a 7-foot swim step and that's okay. And all I'm asking for is maybe that there be some, I guess, give or take in consideration of the rules and as we understand length. So our proposal is that we'd like to request that the mooring be modified. And not really just our mooring, but perhaps given permission to research, maybe there's 10 or 12 other possibilities that might accommodate larger boats. Our boat today is about 45 feet at the water line and sits in the 50-foot row. Overall length is 53.9. We'd like to put a 57-foot Michelson on the same spot. The boat is only nine inches wider, it's very little difference in beam. Length of the water line, 52.6 instead of the 45. Overall, with the bow pulpit and everything, is around 61.1. What's also interesting is I look at the harbor and you look back, maybe if I can find a closer picture, you can see the cans and the cans are pretty far out in front of the boat. The Hauser line keeps those boats attached to the mooring can. And I wonder quite often why these things can't be shortened up just a couple of feet to provide more room or allow a little larger boats without even maybe changing the dynamics of the cans and the mooring weights and whatnot. If granted, if the city would allow me to do this, I think it's again beneficial both to us and to other potential owners. And what I would propose is certainly to pay all the fees, expenses incurred in modifying the mooring to handle a larger boat. I think also it could be a revenue potential. If we purchase a new mooring, there's a 5% transfer tax or transfer fee the city receives. I propose if anybody decides they want to increase their particular mooring, that perhaps there's some kind of a transfer fee that's assessed, maybe it's $500 a foot, $1,000 a foot. In my case, that might be a $7,000 fee. In my case, that might be a $7,000 fee. The city benefits, property taxes go up, and then perhaps it can handle a different or a larger boat in the future. I also think that when I do the math, right now what happens is a 52-foot boat comes into this harbor, that 52-foot boat or longer is supposed to move to the 60-foot row. In other words, you can't put a boat bigger than 50 feet 11.99 inches. So if we could alter or accommodate 55s and 56s in a few of these moorings, what that means is potentially the 60-foot row would be more available for the larger boats, which is the direction the industry is traveling towards. All you have to look at is the city of Los Alamitos and other places that actually have pulled out small slips and put in larger slips to accommodate, you know, the changing trend. I'm in the investment business. I live in the island empire in the city of Redlands. I've been looking at these moorings for a long time. Probably Kate Olson's the one that's looked at them even more than myself. I don't know if she's here tonight, but maybe she could validate some statistics. So when I got online the other day at the moorings for sale, when I bought ours in 1996, I went to the LA Times. Today there is a pretty convenient way to see moorings for sale. What's interesting to me is you'll see row number one up at the top left, and this is, I'm going to say almost totally accurate, but not quite. So a couple moorings on the east side of the green pier that are kind of intermingled in here, but most of the information is for the west, so just, just to be totally accurate. What it shows in row one, there's 30-foot moorings, there's a total of 36 moorings on the west side. Seven of them are for sale. 20% of the inventory is for sale at this point in time. The asking price is around $125,000. I don't know when the last time a mooring was sold.
Yesterday.
Yesterday? Okay, good. So maybe now there's only six. When you look to the two, rows two and three, that's the 40-foot row, there's 78 total moorings there. Right now, nine of them are for sale that I'm aware of, which is about 11 and 1/2% of the inventory. And the price range is 257 to 400, and I think the 257 is on the east side of the pier or something of that nature. The sweet spot seems to be in the 45 or 50-foot range and the 60-foot range. And in rows four and five in that partial row, you have 63 moorings. Three of them are for sale, 5% of your inventory, price ranging between 530 and $675,000. In the 60-foot row, where most of the bigger vacationers are headed, there's only 21 total moorings. 9 and 1/2% of them are for sale. Asking price, only one is listed with a price is $1.8 million. Then on the 70-foot row where the biggest boats are, you've got 16 of them, three, three of them are for sale, and two of them are listed. I was in the yacht club the other day and happened to see the third one being listed on the bulletin board. So again, you look out there, 19% of our biggest moorings are for sale. I kind of find that ironic. In the old days, '96, 2006, people were bidding for these things. You couldn't get them. They often sold, you know, behind closed doors. You didn't even know they hit the market. You could blame some of it on the economy, perhaps. Interesting though, real estate on the, on the mainland is doing quite well. I would imagine real estate here is starting to improve. This is a very discretionary item. I tell people I own a cannon in the water and how much it costs, they think I'm dizzy. But if you look at a revenue standpoint today, you've got about $723,000, almost 3/4 of a million dollars in potential revenue that could be generated to the city if these moorings were being turned. And the question is, well, maybe why aren't they being turned more? What's going on in the marketplace? And I would just like to give a couple maybe suggestions as a, as a tenant out there, as a person that's visited this island for a long time. A couple things I see is, you know, at the end of the day, you want to attract boaters. This is a resort. I think of this as maybe the Marriott. And the Marriott is concerned about safety. It's concerned about people having a good time. It's concerned about lawfulness, just like your harbor department should be, but they're also in the hospitality business. They want people to come and come back and return and do it over and over again. And they also want to get new people to their place because if new people come, they're going to tell their friends and maybe they're going to invite more people over. And the harbor is certainly, you know, one of the cash cows of this island. So some things that I would suggest is, you know, extend moorings where it's possible. Try to be, rather than know, how can we maybe accommodate the changing of the industry? Do something like a YouTube, I just did one for our own firm, where you tell new boaters, maybe a two-minute, three-minute little clip, how to pick up a stick, how to put the hauser on the bow and run back with the spreader line, and where they can park their dinghies in the process. All the time I listen to the radio and I hear the, you know what, you know, is there any space available? It's first come, first served. See the red patrol boat out front, and then they will help you, but it would sure be nice to bring people over where maybe they've already had an opportunity to see how to do it and know what to expect when they get here. I think creating a reservation system is critical. How many of you guys go on vacation and don't plan it? Nobody. And I think not having a reservation system where people can't call over and try to figure out when they could come over for a week or a few days or something like that is certainly a little bit archaic at this time. I do believe though, you're going to have to work with guys like me, mooring owners. Because if you don't know when I'm going to be here and when I'm not going to be here, how are you possibly going to be able to make this happen? So give me a bone. You know, if I cooperate, if I assist you to let people come and plan their vacations and I know I'm not going to be here, I don't know, let me have a side tie free for a day. Let me, you know, pay for my rope upgrade, do something that makes me want to help this city, bring boaters, because I know if that harbor's full, more, those values of those moorings are going to go up because scarcity will start to be an issue. Because when they come, they can't get a rope or a can. And then those cans with 3/4 of a million dollars in transfer fees will start to pop loose and sell, and that will go right into the harbor. And then if we have the ability to accommodate a few of these larger boats over time, you're going to get bigger boaters. Bigger boaters have more kids, they got more people, they got more money, they want a destination. They're staying north of Mexico because of some of the security issues and whatnot. And so I would just encourage you to really try to look at all the different things that we can do and I'll get, I don't know how much time I have, I'll move fast and be done with this. Another thing that I see out there, I'm only 51, I'm somewhat healthy. I joined the yacht club because of the dinghy dock. The dinghy dock out there really, for people that spend 20 or 30 or $40,000 on a dinghy, that if the city could do something in prime time, you know, prime time means maybe mayor Memorial Day to Labor Day or something like that, how do you accommodate some kind of a dinghy situation that people that are typically have enough money to buy a bigger boat, that don't have to crawl over dinghies and get onto a dock that's decrep, crippled, decrepit, whatever you want to call it, and do it safely? And I would think that Avalon, the Blue Water Grill in Newport Beach, in the evenings they have valet parking. In the daytime, you know, they do what they have to do. Over here, I could see potentially even having something where only rubber or soft dinghies are allowed during a certain part of the year. Maybe on busy weekends, we even do something like a valet service, pay a kid to park the boats. That way we know they're safe, we can accommodate more of them. Kind of think out of the box, be creative, because people with wealth that have a big boat with a big expensive dinghy don't want to come over there and necessarily park it to some of the workboats. And there's, there's no pun intended, there's nothing mean about that, it's just the facts of life. And I think that's certainly something to be considered. And I think doing something like that would go a long way to mooring owners. We here the other day, or the visitors got their fees raised another 5% in the last two years, or three years, I'm sorry, 5% in '11, 5% in '13. But you know, if I walked around that harbor and looked at, well, you know, okay, they raised my fees, what did they give me? I don't see much difference. But if every now and then you threw a bone, wow, there's a new dock out there that's been updated. Look, they put a ladder on that other dinghy dock in case you fell in, you could actually climb out. That's the one between the yacht club and the tuna club. I haven't even seen a ladder there. Or if they had something where an old guy, as I get older and I still want to come here when I'm 60 or 70, I can safely get off of my boat, grab onto something, let a kid go tie it up or do something like that. So like other resort areas, Avalon Harbor is in, sure, the safety business, but you're also in the hospitality business. The harbor has tremendous potential. We love it here, we've been coming here for years. And I would just say to you, like when I run my business, I try to create raving fans. I got to do a good job, I got to have performance, I want to, I always say it's the show up on time, do what you say you're going to do, finish what you start. And if I do all those things, my clients go home and they tell their friends and whatnot, and it begins to build. And if boaters come over here and have a phenomenal time, they see the dinghy docks and all these things and a reservation system, and they really begin to feel special, they're going to go back home, they're going to tell the friends on their dock in the gangway, and guess what? More people will start to come, maybe you'll have increased occupancy, increased revenues, moorings will sell, and you'll have more revenue from that, and you'll accommodate the changing trend in the boating industry. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Kerry. Anyone have any questions for Kerry?
Thank you. That's called marketing the harbor.
I do have a master's in marketing.
We need to do that, yeah.
And Two Harbors does some of those things.
They do.
Drop-off dinghy docks, they have a reservation system. Private company.
Questions?
Good points.
Anyone in the audience care to comment? I'd like to spend a minute with our harbor master and run this by him. A lot of those were good ideas. Do you have any issue with that? Whenever Brian gets back, we could have a little powwow and figure out. When does he get back?
Next Tuesday.
Thank you very much, Kerry.
You can get your memory stick if you want to. You can get your memory stick if you want to.
Oral communications. Anyone in the audience have any business for the council that's not on our agenda? Rock.
Rock Goslin, 318 Whitley. Part of what you mentioned, Kerry, bringing that up. I have some friends that are mooring owners and, yeah, they're in the same grumbles. Great. But I wanted to come up here and I'm kind of surprised that so much was being talked about water because that's what I came up here to talk about. I've been here 32 years and this is the fourth time as a business owner that uses quite a bit of water, has to stare rationing and cutbacks and water quality in the face again. And I was going to stand up when Ron was up here, but I'd already planned on the oral communications part. We throw away 450 acre feet a year out the sewer outfall. Why do we continuously talk about wringing our hands, trying to find someone to dig a well or dig out the reservoir when we throw away 450 acre feet a year? We're trying to set an example over here. CR and R now is, is in charge of the MRF. There's, you know, they're sending over all of this recovered material. They're not trying to smelt new aluminum from bauxite over here, they're mining a resource. Why are we even talking about mining a new resource called water? We already have it. But over 20 years ago, comments from my father, the then director of Public Works and Capital Improvement, when he started trying to mention tertiary improvement, he was threatened with his job. 10 years ago, I sat at a conference table at Edison when Cole Lambert was hopefully going to be signed in as a developer here on the island, and our plan was tertiary treat. We're going to make a riparian habitat, a 24/7, 365 riparian habitat through Avalon Canyon, water hazards on the golf course, by recycling our water. That contract wasn't signed, sorry for Cole Lambert, but one of the things that made us all sit back and push back away from the table was then Edison informed us that all, all water on the island belongs to them. I can make all the water I want go away, it's our water now. There is a disconnect with everybody working together. Instead of making new regulations on telling us not to use water, I think everyone needs to join hands and work together and recycle some water. Because I can't be sitting here telling my guests that, well, sorry, you can't use any water, you spent $600 a night for my hotel room, we're going to turn the tap off on you after you shower for a minute. Not going to happen. I'm not going to tell my guests that. And I'm not going to take 20% of my rooms offline in phase three because that's not 20% of my gross, that's 100% of my net-net. Not going to happen. Thanks.
Thank you, Rock. Well said.
And what Rock has been talking about is what San Diego's been doing for about 20 years. They recycle the water, put it back in the aquifer, and it filters, naturally filters down through all the ground and it ends up back in the aquifer and it gets pumped back up and it's used. That's what he's talking about. There was some discussion about doing that years ago, running lines up Avalon Canyon Road and dumping, dumping the water into, into collection areas. And what happened, then they determined that that was saltwater and they couldn't do it.
No, when they were building Joe Machado, they found a water line, medicine line, Edison wouldn't move it. And so they just pulled out of the reclaim water project. It never happened.
No, it is? Yeah, yeah. We talked about, talked to Correx at length about doing that kind of a project. It's got to be done. All we need is about $10 million and that would be fine.
We solve all the issues.
Anyone else, oral communications from the audience? Consent calendar.
We have nine items this evening on the consent calendar. The first one is actions from the June 18, 2013 meeting, the special meeting we had on June 26, and the regular city council meeting of July 16. We ask that you approve all those actions, and I do apologize that you got those again at the 11th hour, but you're lucky you got them tonight.
Just as I remembered it.
Number two is expenditures. This is warrants that were paid on June 30 in the amount of $512,994.22. Third one's expenditures, again submitted for approval, these were paid on July 19. The warrants in the amount of $308,332.92. Payrolls in the amount of $420,928.13 for a total expenditure amount of $729,261.05. Fourth item is the purchase of Volvo tools. The harbor patrol had two boats that had the Volvo diesel engines, and unfortunately it went past the warranty time. In order to repair the engines, we needed the tools. And so we're asking you to retrofit, retrofit the purchase made by the mechanics in an amount that exceeded the $5,000 purchase order. That's something that won't happen again. And that amount is $6,603.18. Number five is the resolution authorizing the destruction of specified records maintained by the finance department, and that's all those boxes that are in the lobby. Scott has reviewed the list that we put together, and so we're asking you to adopt the resolution authorizing the destruction of these records maintained by the finance department. Number six is law enforcement services agreement with LA County. This is an agreement that gets signed every year by the city council, and the resolution states that there are five Catalina resident deputies. Doug would have been here tonight, but I believe he's McGraw the dog or something for. McGruff the dog. Actually, he's wearing the uniform, the dog uniform.
The dog uniform.
That's what he told me anyway.
Crescent Avenue.
Should have delegated.
So we're asking you to adopt the resolution notifying the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors of its desire to receive specified law enforcement services from the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Office and authorizing the expenditure of COPSS grants funds and authorize the city manager to execute the city-county municipal law enforcement services agreement for fiscal year 2013, 2014. Number seven is necessary roadwork that was completed on Pebbley Beach Road. I need to note that a four-fifths vote is required to pass this resolution this evening, and that resolution is missing from your packet. But you need to determine that an emergency existed and to ratify the action by the public works director, director to undertake the necessary repairs and to authorize the expenditure for these repairs to be funded from the street fund, 115, in the amount of $6,642.50. Number eight is the adoption of the resolution approving application for grants funds from the Los Angeles County Regional Park and Open Space District to purchase and install a fitness equipment along Avalon Canyon Road. The project name is Avalon Canyon Fit Trail. If you have any questions, Audrey is in the office. If you have any questions, Audra is in the audience this evening. And this would be from the 4th District Supervisor Kenaby's district and the grant is specifically for trails in urban areas. We're asking that you adopt this resolution approving the application for competitive excess funds from the Los Angeles County Regional Park and Open Space District for 4th Supervisory, Supervisory District excess funding for Avalon Canyon Fit Trail and to direct staff to submit the application to purchase and install fitness equipment along Avalon Canyon Road. I know Audra's placed several calls and there are people that will come and look to see what will actually fit along our canyon. Number nine is field marking paint expenditure. And Jen and Jordan were really thinking outside the box, so they figured out if we bought it in bulk, but we can't use all that paint. So they contacted Avalon Schools and Pony League or Little League and the Adult League. And in your staff report, it's shown how it's all broken down. And it's great savings to the city. So to authorize staff to proceed with the purchase of the palette of field marking paint for a total expenditure of $5,170.8, which includes the shipping and that's why it's before you tonight because it's over the $5,000.
Are we storing that? Is the city storing it or are we distributing it out when people want to?
Where's Jen? Jen, will we be storing the whole palette?
We will not be distributing it on these four user groups.
Okay. Okay. So we're... Right. Yeah. I remember that program. Yeah, better price. Okay.
All right, there's nine items under consent calendar. Any member of the audience care to comment on the nine items that are on consent? I have a handful of questions then. Richard, thank you for addressing item number nine. That was one of my concerns and questions. So let's go back to the beginning. Item number six, the law enforcement services agreement. I have a concern and it's not a direct impact or reflection of what's happening at the Avalon Station, but the dispatch contract is not part of this document or agreement. I would support approving the adoption of this resolution. However, I do want the dispatch portion of our contract to be addressed by city staff to the satisfaction of the Avalon Fire Department. Currently, there are a number of vacancies as dispatchers at the Avalon Station. They're currently being filled by overtime deputies. The spirit of the day is that all they intend to put in that seat is a warm body. That concerns me because the life, response time to life-threatening emergencies, training is different than the way a deputy is trained to respond to such an emergency. And we have city municipal personnel that also are responding to calls that may not be given due regard. So I'd like that addressed. Additionally, you know, we've gone through a remodel down at the Avalon Fire Station or at the Sheriff's Station and as a result, some of the radio communication equipment has been offline, on again, off again. And part of a long-term solution to the island is working with the county to come up with some frequencies that our city folks, Baywatch folks and county sheriff personnel can use in the event of a disaster. We need to address those things. It may be an opportune time to also negotiate with our Board of Supervisors at the same time and kind of get our hands around our Baywatch paramedic contract. Maybe we can have one central powwow and solve some of these things. Item number seven, I recognize that we are, our recommended action is to determine the emergency repairs existed on Pebbley Beach Road. I don't want to mislead anybody. This was certainly not an emergency. It was certainly in the eyes of the public and in the eyes of staff and certainly the council for some time. So I want to caution our Director of Public Works that started this ball rolling that it may not be the best use of public funds to ratify a solution to something that didn't go through a public bidding process. I think that that conversation needs to take place. A number, number eight, this question kind of goes to Audra. There was some discussion some time ago that we were going to try to achieve a grant similar in nature for possibly the horse trail or the hour trail. Is it your plan to maybe incorporate that land use in this process rather than congesting Avalon Canyon Road solely?
That's not the plan because we don't own that land. So if we don't own the land, this is an LA County grant, which is in perpetuity. We have to own the land, similar to Joe Machado, stuff that we've done at Peoples Park, stuff we've done at the Mall. We have to own the property to make the improvements.
Even though it's on record as being an LA County easement for the fire break?
I think we were trying to make the equipment accessible to everyone. That's pretty, that's... We're trying to make it accessible to everyone to use it. I think that your concerns about congestion are definitely valid concerns. That's why we've talked about this before and we're gonna be doing a different approach where I've been actually going out and calling these companies that manufacture it and saying, if you want our business, you need to come over here and look at where we want it to go and tell us if it'll fit properly. Will it work? I'm speaking out of turn because the first person that's gonna be coming over isn't gonna be here till Friday, the first company. That being said, Jen Lavelle and I have had some discussion about the park across the street and some areas that aren't being utilized. Next to the gazebo, there's a bunch of dirt area. One of the things we ran into last time was a couple of the pieces of equipment that we thought were integral to the fit trail were too large to fit in certain areas. So thinking outside the box a little bit, maybe starting the trail at the park where the larger pieces of equipment can be set. And then the smaller pieces like a chin-up bar or things like that can go up the canyon that don't have as much impact. And we're also envisioning them being inside of the fencing area. If you're following me, if you're going to Avalon Canyon. So it may be a little bit inconvenient for pedestrians, you know, because it won't be straight. Maybe there'll be one spot where they'll have to walk around a little bit. But I think that it's an unmet need that the city, if we have the opportunity to apply for the money, really needs to do. That being said, I'm not opposed to extending it up the horse trail or where there's a lot of Los Angeles County easement. It's just not something that's been brought forward to our attention in the past. I think it's brilliant.
Perfect. Well, I thank you for thinking outside the box and you were certainly more elaborate in this discussion and dialogue than in the staff report, so right on.
Sorry.
No, it's okay. We're going in the right direction. And in my apologies, you know, Denise is diligently working until sometimes 2:00 in the morning Friday night to get the agendas out.
I know, Saturday.
And it's August and we're all busy and, you know, the best time to have this conversation is in your office, but here it is Tuesday and so...
And it's fine too because I think it's important that the public knows what it is that we're trying to accomplish. The thing about this, the maximum grant amount is $300,000. It's a pretty large amount. And that's not saying that's what we're gonna be applying for, but it kind of gives us an open-ended thing when we have these companies coming over to... And the other thing too is we're gonna have an installation also as part of it. So we're not taking any, whatever company that we end up going with, you know, will actually come over and install the equipment as well. So we're not taking Public Works off of stuff that they're doing to install the equipment and that way we know it's installed well. So let's keep our fingers crossed we get the money because we're kind of jumping the gun, but...
Right. Thank you, Audra, very much.
Bob, I got a question.
Audra, don't go away.
What is fitness equipment?
A lot of it is like resistance equipment, like, Jen, am I saying it right? Resistance equipment, like chin-up bars and things that are muscle-building. So the theory behind it is that if you're along a trail, you're already doing your cardio, you're walking or you're running or you're whatever. And then you can stop at these, they're stations and you can then do, you know, 10 chin-ups or they have like leg presses, things like that. They're just like outdoor gym equipment is basically what it is.
Where would they be put? On the side of the road or where?
Yeah, that's how they work. And they're, this company that's coming on Friday, they, you know, one of my concerns is that how sturdy are these gonna be to the elements? And they have these, you know, special coatings that they put on the equipment and they're pretty, they're pretty easy to maintain and they're popular all over town. And we don't have, we don't have a gym, so it's something I know that the community has really struggled with. And it's an opportunity to, you know, do something more that's outdoors and healthy and we'll pick colors that look good and, you know.
Anything that'll accomplish exercise is great.
And it's a compliment to exercise, basically.
And in the last round, you know, a couple of years ago when we brought to you wanting to do a similar idea, the same kind of project, we had identified spots where, in that sidewalk area where there's already large palm trees growing. So there's enough room for the pedestrian, plus there's a big palm tree. So many of the areas that we will be pursuing most likely this time will be, you know, just on the other side of the palm tree where there's excess space. So there's still ADA accessibility and plenty of room for the large pedestrian access that we want at that canyon, so. And it's designed for the outdoors. It's not like indoor equipment that's being put outdoors, so.
Super. Thank you. Okay, and then on item number nine, Richard already addressed my concern there was the shelf life and how it was gonna be stored and managed, so I think that that was satisfactory. Any other council members have any questions on the nine items that are on consent?
I don't have a question. I just have a comment in regards to your comment about the emergency situation with the road at the Mall. When the public is using, is avoiding going over bumps that are on the street and driving on the sidewalk that could at any time hit a pedestrian, I see that as an emergency. I don't like the way it happened, but it needed to be done. It was not a good idea to do it on July 1st. And notice should have been given, but it was, to me, it was an emergency in that it needed to be done.
I'm just separating, I realize how important it was to do it. My comment is though that it didn't go through a process, you know, to the lowest bidder and, you know, we obviously knew that for several months that it was bad and an issue and that was, that was my comment.
Bob, I just want to point out that it was started by Public Works and then when the bumps...
Were bad.
It proved to be too much.
Okay.
And they needed the heavy-duty equipment to come in.
Okay. I just want to get back to number five for a second, Bob, about the destruction of the, some of the records. Does the city are planning to get, purchase a scanner yet or is that in the works? Do we know?
That is in the work for the planning department, yes.
Okay.
So they'll be able to do their large documents and...
And it would be, it would be nice, maybe somewhere down the line to go ahead and scan some of this stuff so we don't have the clutter that we have in the middle of City Hall right now. Just for the, you know, just for the fact, years ago with Catherine Hotel incident thing on it, you know, at least we have something on a disk and it's not cluttering. So in the future, it might be nice to scan some of that stuff.
We could check into the cost of scanning some of the documents that we think that might come back at some point as well as the destruction of them.
That might be something good to look into.
Any other comments on the consent calendar? Anyone care to entertain a motion then on consent?
Move staff on one to nine.
Eyes second.
Second. Call for a vote, please.
All eyes.
General business.
General business. Item number 10 is declaration of nuisance and nuisance abatement for property at 339 Catalina Avenue, and I'm gonna let Scott take the lead on this.
This is an item related to a property that we've been in communications with the owner for the last several months. It is a, what we consider an abandoned residence that looks like it's about to collapse and fall down, not only inward, but perhaps to a building next to it. And so the municipal code, and we've asked the owners repeatedly to address the situation and remedy it and they have not. We have copies of the property in front of you. And what your municipal code provides is that if after notice, the property owner does not fix it, that the city council can declare the property a nuisance and authorize the city forces itself to, we could go out and we could do the repairs, we could tear it down and then put a lien on the property. Well, all we're asking you to do tonight is to declare the property a nuisance to give us the ability in a future date to fix it if the owner subsequently doesn't respond to another request. I know that they're trying to work it out. This property's apparently been transferred to a new owner or through, I think it's Family Trust. And so we're working with them, but it's important to at least declare it a nuisance to give you the ability, if things aren't progressing, to authorize then the city manager to go ahead and immediately fix the problem without delaying it further because someone could get hurt. And so again, tonight's action is to officially declare it a nuisance and that will give the city the power to fix it if subsequent efforts do not prove successful.
Thank you, Scott. Is anyone here in the audience representing the residence at 339 Catalina? Any comments from the audience on the side?
My name's Mark Wilmut. My family, part of my family owns one of the houses right next door. It's 341. And there's an eight-by-eight beam that comes out of the wall and it's just completely decayed and it's filled with, I think it had some kind of insect or something ate through it. You look at the bottom where the wood hits the bottom, it's just, it's falling apart. Apparently in the residence, I don't know this, but somebody told me the whole thing's being held together by cables, big cross cables. It's leaning on 341 and it's leaning on the other house next to it. So it's a, it's a very big concern of ours. Hopefully you guys will move forward. I don't think it can be rebuilt. I mean, it's just completely decayed. I don't know how you fix that.
Probably one of those houses with no foundation.
Luckily he has good neighbors that helped hold him up.
So what we are looking for is a motion to declare the property a nuisance and authorize the city to undertake nuisance abatement efforts if further efforts prove unsuccessful.
Want a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
There's another property. It's about 209 Clarissa. I think it's somewhere around there. It looks pretty shabby too. I don't know if that's on your list.
I think there's about four properties that we're working through this process.
I'm guessing it's 209, 207, 211, but it's Clarissa. You can't miss it.
I recognize and realize that there is a motion and a second on the floor, but would it be appropriate to those that made that motion to put some sort of timeline on this before the city then activates its process of demolition? What would be an appropriate time for them to respond to the demands of the city, Scott?
I think, I think they would have to come forward with a plan of remediation within 45 to 60 days. If not, then the city can take action. So that gets them through any difficulty they're having during the summer time. But again, 45 or 60 days, that should be enough.
Is that okay?
It's okay by me.
That's good.
Has the certificate of occupancy been rescinded?
It's been, we're not, I don't know if it's been rescinded. I know that we have tagged the building so that it is not able to be occupied.
I know the attorney, your city attorney, I believe it is, sent something out and it says that the property should not be occupied.
Right, and that's been rectified.
It has?
Yes.
One other question. How long after, if they don't notify in within 60 to 90 days or whatever it is, how long does it take before you guys start demolishing the building?
Depends on how much the cost is, the weather we have. It's a private problem. We could probably do that very quickly. I mean, so we could even, you know, have a party with all sledgehammers.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Call for a vote on item number 10.
All ayes.
Okay. Item 11 has been pulled from our agenda. Is that correct?
Yes, the contract between the city and Onwing Cafetree, I met with Rocky Post yesterday, and he is starting on a maintenance, to shift to a maintenance plan which will decrease the amount of days. So that might, he said that would take him up to about a month maybe, and we are negotiating other parts of his contract. So this item will come back to you in the near future.
Okay.
And on the last item, if I could just get clarification, is it 45 or 60 days? Which did you guys decide?
Forty-five.
Forty-five. Okay, great, thanks.
Item number 12.
12 is consideration to go out to bid on Joe Machado Field concession stand, and I know Jen will be up here to talk to you about it. I guess your options tonight is either to piece it or go out to bid on it. And I just wanted to remind you, back in September of 2012, council authorized an expenditure not to exceed $50,000 on this project, and Jen, um, really jumped on when the landing was closing. She went up and talked to Ken Putman, and he graciously donated over $14,000 worth of equipment that we'll be able to use in the concession stand. That will greatly help. And then the County of Los Angeles Public Health Department has estimated that the remaining equipment will be over $16,000. Jen?
Yes, that's correct. So, um, to clarify, you've seen this item, you've already voted to approve an expenditure of $50,000. However, we felt that we needed to come back to you and get your approval to put this out to bid. And so, um, if you've, I don't know if you've had a chance to see the plans yet, the, um, there's binders across the way if you haven't, and they're also available in the planning department and at the recreation department. They're the same plans that you had seen previously, and those are the plans that have been approved by the health department. The health department approves those plans based on those specifications that we have, as well as the equipment we said is going to be inside of it. Our last estimate for all of that was going to be $50,000, which is what you authorized. We do want to move forward with the construction, complete the building. As Denise mentioned, uh, the equipment that we currently have is valued at around $14,000, and the total, um, cost for all of the equipment, the estimate that was just given to us, was $30,523 in six cents. So, uh, that's wonderful that we've gotten almost halfway there with the, with the big items. So things like the fire suppression system, we already have freezer, sandwich refrigerator, fryer. There's still obviously quite a bit of equipment that we would still need to purchase and, um, and then finish the buildings out. The, uh, the building is, you know, basically a shell. The utilities are to the building, but the utilities haven't been finished out inside the building, so it's just framed out. Um, we, I would anticipate this being a very quick project. We unfortunately haven't received any of the quotes we were hoping to get, um, from the company that designed the building, as well as from our building inspector on what he thought an estimate would be on just the construction portion of it. So, uh, we're, I'm proposing that we put this out to bid, have a contractor do the entire thing, button it up, and, and have it completed. If you, this is an unbudgeted item. It was not in this, um, budget session that we're just finishing. It is earmarked in this upcoming budget that you've been looking at. And so, um, if you choose to try to save money on the, the RFP for a contractor portion of it, we could have staff, um, do things like the drywall and, um, perhaps like tile work and things like that. Obviously, um, it would have to be done to the health department specifications. So that, that's one option that you can consider tonight, but, um, we're asking that you allow us to move forward with the proposed RFP.
Okay, Jen, thank you. Uh, anyone in the audience care to comment on this item? Council?
No, I think we need to get it done. It's been, this is a dead horse we've been whipping.
I'm with, I'm with Richard on this one. Richard, I've been effort for almost seven years and still fighting this battle, and I think we need to get it done. Piecemeal, piecemeal is not going to cut it.
No.
So I think I hear a motion and a second?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Call for a vote, please.
All ayes.
And just so you know, um, whenever we have a public works project, we'll be bringing it to the city for approval of the project and the design. As I discussed maybe about a year ago, there are some cases out there that say that if the city council approves the design of the project, then there's certain immunities that, uh, fall with that. So that if someone's hurt and they allege, oh gosh, this was designed, um, inappropriately, if the city council has approved the design, we have immunity from any, um, injuries. So it's been our practice the last couple of years throughout our cities to bring all these projects to the city council for, uh, design approval.
Here, here to immunity.
Question for Jen, Bob. I think we also included in that, uh, up at the Joe Machado Field, the storage shed too in that, right?
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. I did want to mention that. That is in the RFP.
Okay.
It's not as extensive clearly of a project because it is a storage-
Sure.
-shed and, um, maintenance. So that, um, is in the proposal. We are hoping within that $50,000 because we have some of that equipment already purchased that we'll be able to purchase instead of manufacture ourselves. The, the storage units that act- the leagues will actually be using to store their equipment in because there's some great stuff out there. And that way that all the different leagues can lea- can have their equipment secured and on their, on their own space, so.
Yeah. So, uh, are you getting in touch with anybody at the school and Little League and everybody like that to look at that? To see what their needs are for the storage areas? Because everybody has different needs. You have your football, you have your-
Sure.
Pee-wee's. If we could get a group together to look at that and maybe all agree on a design for that for storage? So everybody-
We can certainly have a user meeting and, and do that before we do the job walk for the RFP. That's not a problem at all. It's a good idea.
Thank you.
Don't go far. Okay, item number 13.
Item number 13 is the community digital signage consideration. And at the April 2nd, 2013 meeting, Jen had just proposed this idea. It wasn't an agenda item. It is under the $5,000 limit. I could have signed off on it, except I know that Ralph had some questions that evening, and I wanted to make sure that city council at least had consensus that they wanted to move forward with this idea. So I'll let Jen take that over again.
Sure. So as Denise mentioned, this is under the $5,000 mark, however, because it was not a budgeted item, um, in our budget this last year. Uh, we, we did want to just ha- make sure that we had council consent before we moved forward on it. So, uh, as you'll recall, I did a, a short PowerPoint presentation on this last time. The, um, idea being that, uh, this would potentially really increase the, uh, you know, visibility of community events, uh, be a great way for the city certainly to get across its, um, various programs and things like when vehicle registration is due and, and dog licenses and those kind of things. People, we would then recoup the money that we're spending on this by selling advertising space on it, and that would be advertising for things like your yard sale coming up, your, um, you know, men's softball league that's registration is coming up, those kind of things. And, um, the software and hardware to actually run the program is $1,450, and that is, um, it's like a small box that it, like a little Roku-looking box that attaches-
Called a character generator.
Thank you. No, it's actually not. It's directly using Wi-Fi to, um, talk to any of our, uh, software that we have on either on our city computer, or I can upload it onto my smartphone. So I could be standing in line at the post office and Michael could tell me an update, and I can put it in there and walk into Vons and see it on the screen right then. It's really, it's pretty great. So the space, uh, for this area would allow for a 70-inch TV. The quotes that I have here with the mounting bracket and the TV would be just under $2,000. So the total project cost would be $3450. And again, we're hoping to recoup that money within two years by selling the advertising space, which would be kept very affordable so that it would allow everyone to do it. And it would just be on a quickly rotating screen, um, so that when you're in line at Vons, as you're looking above the doorways to exit, you would, um, see what's happening on city council this coming Tuesday night, that kind of thing, so.
Can the TV monitor accompany a camera so that we can send live feed video back to the president of Vons showing them that there's a line of shoppers that go all the way back to the-
And only, and only one lane open?
I tell you, we had a meeting with them. How long was that? How long ago was that meeting?
It was a while back.
It was a while back, and they made so many empty promises to this community, and it's gotten worse. I mean, I don't think that, what?
Well, one of-
I'm preaching to the choir.
You know, the, the good news about this is they were really excited about it, and they put in the Wi-Fi, they're paying for the internet, you know, monthly internet so that we don't have to. So while they may be very slow and non-communicative on some areas, this was the one thing that I've seen action on, so.
You're all excited.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, Richard and I, one day, we were sitting there at Vons watching the line and watching the cashiers, having everybody hustle. And you got people, you could visualize people sitting there watching the television.
Not going anywhere.
That ain't gonna work.
Well.
And channel 40, channel, uh, what, 30, 29, the, the broadband company, which I'm not involved in anymore, they have a whole setup sitting there that somebody can walk in and use. Or we got a fiber link from here to the system. And you could, you could put all this on channel 29, and then it can go on any television anywhere. You don't even need an internet connection. You don't need any of that stuff, okay? And it, because it's gonna, it's gonna be seen. Now that, channel 29 is seen on almost 2,000 television sets, over 2,000. And, and granted, not everybody has a cable, but, um, but doing what you're doing is something that we did for the last 28 years. And the advertising is out of the question. Who's gonna monitor it? It's a pain and it takes up a lot of space, and people are gonna be hustled enough to get through that line to see advertising.
Well, we were envisioning the one location that nearly every resident needs to go to, and what more time do you wish you didn't have to kill reading tabloids than when you're in line at Vons? So rather than put this, say, at the post office arcade or things like that, we really thought utilize that time that they're already spending in line by giving them a little bit of community information along the way as well. And the, we had looked into the opportunity with the broadband, and the reason why I'm recommending that you allow us to go ahead with this approval is because of the fact that it's so user-friendly that I don't have to email the announcement to the cable company or anything like that. I can manage it directly and from anywhere, is, is really the, the thing about it. And that would cut down on the amount of time it would take to manage such a program. If I had to spend time, you know, having all the different user groups email to the broadband or that kind of thing, I mean-
There's a fiber connection from here directly to that office that you can put anything on. You could put a character generator here and transmit it there, and it can go out on channel 29 and go to any television set wherever you want to put it. But it's just a suggestion. It, but it's, uh, the advertising doesn't work. Just, I know. So, I mean, it's a small thing. It's not a big deal. It's, it's a nice idea, but we've been through it for a long, long time, and it's just, what we do is just, we keep it up. We, we, we beg people to come and add their stuff to the, uh, to the system, to the announcement, because that's a bulletin board just for Avalon.
Right.
That's what it is, 29. So, and it doesn't have any advertising on it. It just has all the stuff there, so.
I think what drove this also is that all the comments you always hear, well, I don't have cable, so I don't know what's happening on the local channels. And so I don't know if she saw one of these in operation, but that's what got her thinking of, if there's another way to really let the community know what's happening and what's the one spot that everybody always goes to, so.
And maybe Vons can post it. When they have food, family shopping hours.
Yeah, yeah. And who invited, did you go to the, to the hierarchy of Vons to get the approval?
I went to the low man on the totem pole, the store manager, Richard. And I wrote them a letter, and he took it to their corporate office, and they had their corporate-
Did you get it from the corporate office?
Their corporate office approved it, and then put the, the internet was just installed last week.
Anyone else in the audience care to comment on this item?
This is Ann Coons. Ann, you know, honestly, the last thing I want to do when I'm in Vons, just as a local citizen, is stand in line any longer than I have to, and I'm not gonna be watching a feed on a screen, maybe in the post office where I'm on my own time. I'm not feeling rushed. I'm not in that crowd feeling frustrated because Vons is frustrating enough. Where, you know, something like that. But honestly, I really think that it's a waste of city money to put something like that in Vons particularly. I think there may be other outlets that could be explored, that could be less expensive, um, that would, for everybody, start with the cable company because that is a very valuable channel since it already exists. That's free. Start there, work your way up. But I definitely think it's a total waste of funds.
Anyone other comments from the audience? Comments from council?
I just wish, I don't know if there's another place for it in Vons. Is there another place in Vons in there somewhere, other than right over the front door? Did you look around? Did they, you guys explore that a little bit in Vons?
No. My question is, when you're standing in line at Vons and you're at the end of the line, what are you doing other than standing in line watching everybody in front of you? You don't worry about trying to get out of Vons until you're right there with the check. So I-
I just think there's better places for it.
Reason I kind of like it is there's a lot of satellite dishes in town that don't get channel 29. So I think there's an untapped market out there.
There, there may be an unmet market, and I think maybe I've got a better solution. Let's send a letter to the president of Vons and encourage her to come back and sit at the roundtable with us again to come up with the solutions that we've been experiencing at that Vons grocery store and share with them our needs to keep the community in touch with community events and see if they'll pay for it.
Okay.
And if nothing else, come to the table and tell us that the lettuce will be fresher today than it was yesterday. Is that enough direction? Everybody okay with that?
And what is the family shopping time? Does anybody know?
Family shopping time? Yeah, the time that they open till the time they close.
Friday between 5:00 and 7:00.
And it's very important to go counterclockwise in the, counterclockwise with your cart while your kids are going clockwise.
Oh, yeah. And then stop in the middle of the aisle by the deli.
Okay, item number 14.
This is regarding city lease renewals. In three different closed sessions, I believe, we bantered about different changes to make to city leases. And before we started filling in the blanks, I wanted to make sure you saw all, all the changes that you had proposed in one place, and we could do it in a public forum. So one of the things is monthly rent is going to be increased to 5,000, uh, 5,000, $5, $5 a square foot, or 10%, whichever is greater, and there will be no reconciliation.
10% of what?
Gross.
Now, you're gonna be looking at numbers again? Didn't we talk about not looking at gross?
No, the, the, the direction was 5, $5 a square foot, or 10% of gross, whichever is greater, each month with no reconciliation.
You can change that tonight, Ralph.
Right, that's, that's the direction that we had, so that's what we did.
We were gonna require the tenants to be open nine months a year minimum. They can close for 90 days, but they still pay their rent for 12 months. They're required to be open on all cruise ship days. And we're raising the insurance liability to $2 million. This will be on the next city council agenda as a first reading, because currently, the ordinance says it's $1 million. If applicable, you'll pay admissions tax and a harbor use fee, or harbor use fee. Transfer fee will be 5% or $5,000, whichever is greater. A 10% penalty for late payments, I think that's what it currently is anyway. Term of the lease would be for five years. One exception would be the lease for Catalina Express was gonna be for 10 years. Those were the changes that you had proposed.
And we also talked about, um, looking at the restaurant leases for the open-on-cruise ship days, when they have a restaurant that's only open one day a week in the wintertime, which might lead to some issues.
Right. We're gonna have, that, there will be a, in each, that would be up to the city manager, in terms of, for, for those, those properties, given the fact that if in January or February, they're only open two days, and, you know, you can't get fresh food in there for, for those two days. But that would be up to the city manager to determine.
And any leases on a city property that's planned to be rehabbed should not extend past the beginning of the rehab period?
Say that again, Ollie.
Any leases on city property that's planned to be rehabbed, rebuilt, reconstructed, the lease shouldn't go farther than the start date of the rehab.
Uh, the, the leases for the mole area contain certain provisions.
I was thinking more like casino dock. We rebuild the dock.
Right, right. This is, I mean, what we're gonna be doing is, we, we've got the master lease ready to go. Obviously, each lease may involve a little bit of tweaking, because there's also special uses for each lease. There's some certain rules we have for each property. But the general provisions are gonna be consistent. And we just wanted to get your final approval, now that we've got it all done, and we're, they're ready to go out.
Can I ask one more question?
You can.
Effectively, September 1st?
Oh, it'll probably be October 1st.
October 1st.
Any comments from the audience on lease items that are before us?
Good evening, Randy Brownock, 209 Beacon. We're talking about city leases, so we're talking about businesses in the harbor. And it was very short notice that was given, I think Saturday afternoon, it was first posted.
This is not for that.
This isn't that, Randy.
Well, this isn't...
No, this is city leases.
Next item.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Lease of city property.
This is city property.
City property, correct. City property. Am I on the same page you are?
The one, the one you, no, the item you want to comment on is the next item.
No, I want to comment on this item, please.
Okay, alright.
But if, if, if I'm allowed to.
No, you certainly are.
You are. So, was the notice given for this on Saturday afternoon also, for Tuesday? Oh, it was, it was come out sooner?
No, no, no. This is, it was noticed on the agenda.
Okay.
That's the only notice for this item.
My, my point is, is that perhaps some of the businesses in the harbor didn't, so doggone busy, like you were saying earlier, Bob, didn't get it, weren't here. Because I'm thinking, Jay Guyan, you're gonna force him to, to be open through, through stormy season, or, or the wet spot? That, that doesn't make a lot of sense, you know, in cruise ship days. So maybe there should be a provision that businesses that are subject to winter storms, or some language there, might have a waiver. That's, that's my comment. Thank you.
So if we fly the city flag, the small craft warning, they don't have to be open?
Well, we're asking the business to be open nine months a year. A lot of people roll up the curbs when it's unsafe to be open and, and operate. I think that that's a, that clearly is a justification for closing your business. But I think we're trying to avoid, Randy, is those that open up shop for three months, and then close up the canopy and go away.
Like you operate year-round, but you don't send out boats, you don't send out kayaks when the small crafts are. We kind of want everybody playing on the same playing field, so that we're open when we're open, and we're closed when we're appropriately closed.
Anyone care to entertain a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Call for a vote, please.
All ayes?
Okay, item number 15, Scott.
Okay, so item number 15 concerns the expansion of the area in the city where a waterside permit is required. Let me briefly give, give a little background here. Currently, the way the municipal code reads is you only have to get a waterside permit if you're operating within the harbor, or if your boats leave or land within the harbor. And you have to get a waterside permit. The cost of a waterside permit is a one-time fee of $194. That waterside permit is, then, it, it is renewed every year, but you don't have to pay the $194 fee. And in that waterside permit, the harbor master, when, when it is issued, we make certain that you have the appropriate license. If there's something unusual about how you operate your business, we put conditions of approval on it, and it provides that you have to have proof of the appropriate insurance. For some reason, this regulation does not apply to businesses that are operating outside of the harbor. For instance, Descanso Beach, Lover's Cove, or, or anywhere else. And so, the purpose of this ordinance is to expand the area to equal all city waters, where if you're operating, if you're conducting a business in city waters, that you have to get a waterside permit fee. It costs you $194, one-time fee. The city, you have to provide the city with a proof that you're appropriately licensed, that you have insurance, and that the city can then look at the type of business you have. And then the city council, in a hearing, can put any conditions that are appropriate. You may be impacting structures outside of, of the harbor, that we need to make certain that we have appropriate regulations. And again, these are conditions that are approved by the city council on a permit-by-permit basis. The ordinance does not subject any business to harbor fees or use fees that they're not already paying. The only cost to a business is a one-time fee of $194 to, to have the permit issued. And that cost covers staff time for going through, checking insurance, sometimes they consult with me, and then for any notice that is required for the city council. So there, there is no other fee associated with this ordinance. It's $194, one-time fee, that's it. And again, the purpose is, you know, businesses are operating within city waters. We want to make sure everyone's safe. We want to know who they are, if they're impacting the city. We want to have the ability to put reasonable conditions on it. We want to make certain that they're, everyone's appropriately licensed. We've gone through a thing about a year and a half ago, where we added a requirement in our waterside permit application, that you provide proof that you actually have the license to conduct the business that you're actually conducting as part of public safety. We don't want people operating, in some instances, dangerous businesses, without the appropriate license. And again, we also make certain that you have appropriate insurance to cover yourself, if, in case something goes wrong. So that's the purpose of this. It's driven by public safety. It's driven by the city's desire to, to understand what's going in, going on with, within city waters, and it's not increasing harbor fees, it's not increasing user fees. One, one-time fee, $194. That's my presentation.
So to reiterate, those that are paying an admissions tax for their business are going to continue to pay admissions tax for their business. Those that are paying harbor use fees, that are working within the groin of the mole, are going to continue to pay the fees for the use of the harbor facilities.
Yes. And if you're not paying a harbor fee right now, because you're not using harbor facilities, nothing in this ordinance increases any fee that you're paying.
Question. What, what justifies, or what is the city waters? Tell me where they go.
Hamilton to Pebble.
Hamilton to, uh...
Ring Rock.
Ring Rock, and then it's, I think it's, I think it's 300 or 400 feet, yards out.
Okay, besides the jet ski barge?
It's outside city waters.
What else is out there?
Jet skis outside the city waters, and state waters.
Oh, it is?
Yeah. That's why it's there.
Okay, well, yeah.
Believe there's some...
I wasn't sure.
I believe, I believe that there's some businesses on Descanso Beach that would be subject to this. You would be there, anyone operating in Lover's Cove, because that's outside of the harbor, would have to get a waterside permit fee if they're operating there. And then it would also apply as written to any companies, like for instance, diving companies, that would be offering, you know, they mainland tours, and they bring 20 divers to operate in our, in our waters. As written, it would apply to them, so that we could know that they're appropriately licensed and have insurance.
Lover's Cove, okay.
Yep.
Okay, let me get this straight. We've been operating 20 years at Descanso Beach. We have a business license. We have insurance as required by the city. And now we get to apply for another permit, just because you want to make sure we're doing this correctly?
You and other businesses, it's not just, it's not directed at particular, at one particular business. It's to have, to have everyone be on, everyone who's operating within city waters on the same footing. It's to make this equal, so that there's businesses that, if you're operating and you just stay within the harbor, you're subject to one set of rules. And if you're operating still within the city, but you're outside of the harbor, you're subject to a different set of rules. This is kind of like, makes everything uniform, and, and it, it levels the playing field for everyone. That's the purpose.
And right now, we don't know if you have insurance, because you, you have no waterside permit.
Yes.
We don't require it.
There's a lot of things she doesn't tell me.
I know that. I'm married also. And speaking of Kate, I just want to give her a shout-out for, for giving me a heads-up. I really appreciate it. And everything that, that she's helped me with, and the harbor department, who does a stellar job. The reason was it was not necessary. The, the purpose of the waterside permit was to deal with congestion in the harbor around the floats. And so, up until now, there's never been a reason for it to be a, a different way. So from this point forward, we're gonna look at it differently, understand that. But Scott, that's, that's the reason, Mr. Campbell, that's the reason, that, that there wasn't. It was done primarily due to congestion in the harbor. And everything that went on the harbor was vetted, uh, vetted either by the harbor commission, or it was thrown up to city council, and decisions were made based on the appropriate information and appropriate licensing, and they were allowed to do it. And a couple of things I'm gonna say, because I just want them on the record. And I just want to take exception to the report summary, where it says, while this requirement covers most businesses operating in city waters, some businesses avoid obtaining a waterside permit by not conducting business in. I think that's what Mary was just a little upset about. We haven't avoided anything. We've, we've abided by the, by the law, to the letter of the law, and everything's been required of us, of the city, we've, we've taken. And then it further goes on to talk about a loophole. There's been no loophole. It's just, that's just the way the law's been written. And I did not see where, in the document, maybe you can point it to me, you just said that I'm going to, well, I'm not gonna pay, I'm gonna pay 100, maybe I'm not even gonna pay $194, because I already have a waterside permit. But I didn't see that language in the document on the one-time fee.
It's, it's, that's what the fee is, it's, it's in, it's in the fee schedule? That's what the fee is?
No, I understand. Pardon me. Let me be more clear. I did not see where it says that I will just be subject to the 4%, and nothing further, or however, you know, articulately you pointed it out just a moment ago.
It, it is. It's on the second page. It says fiscal impacts, additional waterside permit fees. That's it. Nothing about any other fee. Additional waterside permit fees is exactly what the fiscal impacts are.
Okay, understood. Now, my waterside permit calls out that I have to pay 7%. So will that be amended?
Your waterside permit, though, Randy, because you operate within the harbor for some things, correct?
That's, that's correct.
That's why you have a waterside.
That's the boat, yes.
But your business at Descanso Beach wouldn't be impacted with the 7% harbor use fee, because you don't use the harbor for, for your kayak tours.
The harbor use fee...
So nothing will, will change?
Correct. The harbor use fee as written is for harbor facilities, which is narrowly defined as within the harbor.
Okay.
So if you're outside the harbor, you're not subject to the harbor use fee.
Okay. I just, just want that spelled out.
Understood.
Because, because when I first read this, it was gonna cost me perhaps $24,000 in my, my first understanding. So I was visibly upset. And it was gonna put me out of business. So I just, I just want to know that that's, that's not the case. Okay? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Ann Coons, I have Catalina snorkeling adventures. I just started up March 4th. I'm trying to get going here. We do snorkeling in Lover's Cove currently. And we currently pay 4% for every person that we take out to the city. And I do that religiously, and I do that honestly. And I carry every ounce of insurance and everything that I'm supposed to be doing. Couple questions, though. Number one, my husband wanted me to ask, with this new permitting that needs to be required, is this one permit, then, one harbor use permit, and it can be for both our land-based type tours, like two Lover's Cove and the boat, or will we be required to have two completely separate harbor use permits? One for a boat, if we would, if we would like to get a boat in the near future, and one for doing our tours to Lover's Cove in addition?
You can have as many waterside permits as you want. You could have one waterside permit that covers all your operations, or you can have a separate waterside permit for each operation, in case you wanted to perhaps sell one of the businesses. It's, it's up to you.
Okay.
Okay? But, you know, if, if your current waterside permit, for instance, only allows you to operate, let's say, within the harbor, and you want to operate outside of the harbor, then the appropriate thing would be to ask for a modification of your waterside permit to, to, to cover everything you want to do. And again, you know, that does not subject you to the, you know, an additional 4% fee that you're not paying right now. Is that, because that is all the admission, is the 4%, and then the 7% is the harbor use, for the harbor, for use of harbor facilities. If you're not using the harbor facilities under the ordinance currently written, you don't pay... harbor facilities under the ordinance currently written, you don't pay that, you don't pay that seven percent fee.
Okay. It's important that, that, that wording be very, very clear too. Um, the other thing is that you were talking about, I heard barely, um, I think Ralph was asking about, um, the divers from over town. We have instructors. And as instructors as well, if we choose to do instruction in the dive park, um, currently, those of us in business over here are required to pay the four percent to the city to do the diving, to do any instruction over here in Lover's, I mean, in the dive park. How is that going to be regulated with divers from over town, instructors from over town coming over, which tends to be, you know, a lot of people come over to use the dive park to do instruction as well. And so we're gaining a lot of, the city does gain revenue from that with them coming in and eating in our, in our restaurants and sometimes staying in our motels. So how is that going to be enforced and what kind of an impact is that going to give if we're out trying to now have to make sure that everybody that comes over has this permit and is paying this tax? I mean, it's not fair that we have to and they don't, but at the same time, what are, what are the impacts we're going to be looking at when we start having to regulate that with them?
The only thing that we're concerned about regulating with them is they're subject to admissions tax, which excludes education. So if somebody brings a dive class over from the mainland and they teach it at the dive park, or you take a dive class out and teach it to the dive park, education's been removed from the admission tax clause.
Okay, so any instruction that we actually do, that, that doesn't, does that count as a discovery dive as well? Is that, um...
Anything that, anything that is sanctioned by a training agency as a completed piece of instruction is exempt from admissions tax. However, that would mean that if a dive shop from the mainland, let's grab a random dive shop that's here a lot, Malibu divers, comes over to the island and they're doing tours for pleasure in addition to training and education, they would be subjected to paying admissions tax on those tours.
On the tours? Okay. So those of us who, if we, those of us in the dive industry that are here locally, we are not subject to any admissions tax if we do full instruction courses?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, that wasn't clear to me in the past either. Thank you.
And the point you raised about regulating that is going to be addressed some way. We're just not sure how, because that is-
Yeah, obviously. And this ordinance would not go into effect until the end of this season. So it does not apply, because it's, it's thirty days after the second reading. So we're looking at mid-
September twentieth.
September twentieth. And, and then it's, I, I would imagine what we'd be doing is for those entities that we know that are operating outside of these areas, we would send them the appropriate letter and the application, just saying, just come in and fill out an application. And so, um, that's how I envision the initial phase of this working.
So may I throw out a hypothetical question, because I think Randy touched upon it and then I think Anne kind of reiterated something that kind of brings up a question in my mind. Randy currently is in possession of a waterside permit. He's already at some point in time paid an application fee to the city of Avalon for a waterside permit. So to add his Descanso Beach tours to that waterside permit would not induce a fee?
I don't believe that we have a fee schedule. I don't believe there's a fee, I have not seen, look at it this way. I have not seen in our fee schedule, a fee for a modification of a waterside permit. That doesn't mean that there's not one. I'm just not aware of it. If, if... Okay, so, so, so again, now I've been provided knowledge-
Modifications one ninety-four and a new application is?
One ninety-four. Right. Yeah, there, there are certain modifications that can be done over the counter, um, by the harbor master. And looking at the definition that I was provided today, if you're expanding into a new area, in other words, if you're having a waterside fee expanded to a, a, a new area where you're not operating, that would trigger, um, the hearing before the council to give you, to modify that, uh, waterside permit fee. Whether the council wants to impose, ma- make, well, you guys can decide whether you, what you want to do with the fee for modifications as a result of this ordinance.
Randy, is your harborside permit in DBOS? No. It sounds like a new permit.
Correct. Yeah, it, 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 for, for those people, for instance, that have a, let's say, a couple boats-
Use me as an example. I'm going to pay four percent at Descanso and I'm going to pay seven percent off the dive boat.
Correct. And so the fee could reflect that. Or it, it, the fee will probably say, the permit would probably say, for those portions, those parts of the business where you're, you're using harbor facilities, it's currently defined in municipal code, you're going to pay the seven percent. And if you're not, you're going to pay, uh, the four percent admissions tax.
But Randy's got two different businesses.
So then he's going to have to, uh, account for the four percent on one and the seven percent on the other. But again, this is not going to subject him to an additional payment of those, uh, fees unless they change the nature of the business and start using harbor facilities. If you're using harbor facilities, the, the code already provides, you're supposed to say, pay seven percent. Nothing in this ordinance changes that.
Well, it's, it's very-
No, it just, I'm, I'm not sure how you have a harbor, a waterside permit for two businesses on one permit, two separate business names.
Well, if it's two separate business names and it's owned by two different people, I would suggest you have two separate permits.
Right.
Robert Coons, uh, my wife and her mother have Catalina snorkeling adventures. I have a question here. If we would have to have a harbor permit to do our tours to Lover's Cove, could the city say, no, you can't have a permit, which would in essence, close our business down?
The municipal code currently provides that there are ten conditions which must be satisfied. Um, and, and it says that we, the city has to make an affirmative finding that these ten conditions are not satisfied, and then it could deny it. So hypothetically, if you're, if you owe the city money, if, um, the, the, if any one of the ten, uh, conditions exist, the city council could deny the permit. So that is an absolute possibility. It's, the purpose though, is not intended to deny permits. It's intended to grant permits upon reasonable conditions, so that we can, we can monitor the business properly regulated and provide for public safety of people using the business. But to also provide that if having been given a waterside permit, you're found to be in violation of the conditions, that the city could at that point then revoke the permit.
Okay. Um, as long as you meet those ten conditions though, there would be no possibility of being refused. This, this concerns me. This gives the city council here and the city of Avalon an awful lot of power over businesses that are already in existence.
I would agree with that. Um, I would also say that the citizens operating within the harbor, um, are subject to, uh, the regulations. They do come and they do get harbor use permits. And again, this is from my view, um, evening the playing field, um, for businesses operating in city waters. But I, I, I don't believe the council, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong on this, I don't believe the council has ever denied a waterside permit, at least not since I've been here in four years. You may have been revoked.
I think we revoked a couple, but we haven't denied-
Yeah, that, that just concerns me, that somebody who's already in business, you know, and runs their business properly, you know, could be shut down simply because they've been refused a permit.
They could do, the city could do the same thing over a business license, or what you saw tonight condemn a home. Um, you know, there may be in the future, a condition that exists, um, where a business is being conducted in a way that puts the public at risk. And I think it's the city's responsibility then to act upon that.
Okay, that's fair enough. Okay. Thank you.
But is, is the goal to, you know, to burden a business any more than we already do? No. And I think the goal and objective here is to make everything on an even playing field and to get everybody to be viable stewards of our environment and make things safe for all of the visitors that come out here and play with us. And make, make your requirement to do that the same as the guy that's competing against you.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm all for, uh, us conducting our businesses safely, you know. So, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the audience? Direction from council? Would you like a motion?
The appropriate motion will be to introduce in a way of all readings of an ordinance limiting chapter two harbor regulations of title ten of the Avalon Municipal Code to expand the areas where a waterside permit is required.
So moved.
I'll make a comment that Scott Campbell has figured out how to get a hundred and ninety-four dollars out of my pocket.
Good job, Scott.
So I need a second.
I'll second this.
Call for a vote, please.
Four ayes, Kennedy, Ponce, Hernandez, Olson, and one no. Council member Morrow.
Too confusing.
Just the next one should really confuse you.
Item number sixteen.
It's called cannabis.
Stay for this one. It's going to be fun.
Item sixteen, Scott?
Uh, item number sixteen is a, uh, new ordinance of the city of Avalon, which would add a section to the municipal code that would prohibit, uh, medical marijuana dispensaries and mobile marijuana dispensaries. Um, as the council knows, um, this California Supreme Court recently held that cities have the power to prohibit medical marijuana dispensaries with, within cities. Um, that was, uh, I think it was an unanimous ruling by the Supreme Court. Um, and so what cities across, uh, California have been doing is deciding whether they want to regulate it, um, and, and allow it and put regulations on, or ban it, um, outright. And the council's direction was to draft an ordinance that would ban such businesses. And so we're coming forward with an ordinance that does that. Um, what many cities have found that have had these businesses, and it's referenced in page three and four of the ordinance, is that when you have medical wanna, medical marijuana dispensaries, there's, um, because you're transporting marijuana to and from the facilities and that's where the pot is, that there is, uh, at least anecdotally, uh, increase in crimes, because that's where the criminals, kind of like, you know, why do bank robbers rob banks? Because that's where the money is. Um, this would be, uh, cities have found, uh, the same im- impact of having, uh, medical marijuana dispensaries. So again, this would, uh, ban all such dispensaries in the city.
Anyone in the audience care to comment on this item? Nobody wants to talk about it.
There's a lot of giggling out there.
So, so if I have a water, so if I have a waterside, so if I have a waterside permit, I can't make it a mo-, I can't make it a mobile dispensary?
Well, that's the latest trend, is what people are trying to do, is the saying that, that, that if they sell it from their car, it's mobile and it's not subject to regulations. And so we're, we're dealing with that.
So no bond?
Sorry.
Okay. Anyone on the council care to introduce this and waive the future readings?
I'll make, I'll make a motion that the city council introduce and waive all readings of an ordinance of the city of Avalon, adding chapter twenty to title five of the Avalon Municipal Code to expressly define medical marijuana dispensaries and mobile marijuana dispensaries, and clarify that such dispensaries are unlawful in the city.
Second. Call for a vote, please. Discussion, discussion. You want to discuss it?
I just want to say one thing, that's all.
Okay.
No, I'm, I'm for it. My son, my, this is my son's business. He goes all over California teaching people how to do this right. He used to bust them over here from eighty-eight to ninety-two as a cop. Now he's one of those witnesses that they call. He, he talked to me and I wrote a bunch of notes down. Here, here's, here's the one thing, that the problem that we, in, in this was done, we, we have somebody here in Avalon that, uh, as a result of the war, they, they do the cannabis by prescription from a doctor or so. And he had a, a relative bring over his weed and he was accosted at the helicopter by the sheriff's department and was prosecuted and had to clean this, the freeway up for about two months. Um, so there's some issues there. And, and, and a couple of things. The, uh, the sheriff's department told me that seventy to eighty percent of, uh, the cannabis, uh, that's, uh, that's, uh, gotten from people breaking the law is medical marijuana, because it's good weed, according to the people that use it. And, and, um, but here's the kicker. The, out of, out of a thousand prescriptions for medical marijuana, probably two or three are genuine. The rest are, you know, just an excuse. And that's the people I want to talk about, because there could be, there are people here in Avalon that have a prescription that, that do use it, uh, and, and really need it. There are some people that really need this stuff. Uh, no, I'm just, I'm just, the, I, I talked to my son for about an hour today and he, he gave me the wherefore and all that. And best and best is, is known throughout the state of California, is having this, this nasty rule here. There's a lot of people that like this stuff, don't like what you're doing. But the one kicker, uh, that I, that I want to let everybody know about, is that the people, those that say are suffering from terminal cancer, that, that have, uh, the, these different diseases like glaucoma and things like that, where the pills get you sick and, uh, the weed takes the, takes the pain away, uh, those few people have a real serious problem. Because one thing you don't know, that maybe you haven't thought about, is that when you come across that channel, the federal government and all the rules pertaining to marijuana are, are not accepted. You know, the feds say, you can't have that. So if anybody transports it on the boat over here, they're now on a federally regulated vehicle. Your private boat, you, you gotta, gotta have that, uh, permit and cross-channel carriers and the helicopter and all that. So if for instance, somebody goes over and gets their one pound of weed for fifteen hundred bucks, by the way, uh, and they, they need it a lot, and that's say, a week's worth of cannabis.
Wow.
Well, stay stoned. There you go. Some people stay stoned all the time. Anyway, uh, and that person is on the boat and one of the coast guard guys come up and, and grab that one pound, fifteen hundred bucks, that person's in trouble. Okay? So there's a lot of issues around there. It's not really straightforward, especially with that twenty, twenty-six miles of ocean out there. But the one pe-, the one person I was told that we have to really look out for is the one that really needs it. The one in the, in the community that can't go on the boat every week to get their, uh, to get their prescription filled. And there are some ways that can be solved, that can solve this. There can be an RN, an Avalon hospital that can, uh, that can get a permit to, uh, carry the, carry the cannabis over here and distribute it to the people that really need it. So there is an issue there. And that's all I wanted to say. There, there's a lot to this. But that's the one issue. But I'm all for it. I mean, should be passed, so that's it. That's all I can say.
Okay. Any other comments? There's a motion?
Motion and a second already.
Call for a vote.
All ayes.
Okay, let's take a three-minute break.
Three?
Well, I figured if I say three, it'll really be five. Okay, we've returned. Item number seventeen.
It is to extend the professional services agreement for the finance department and in February fifth, we started a contract with Urban Futures which provided additional staffing resources for our finance department to help with our accounting backlog and assist in the preparation of some city financial reports. Been assisting bringing up all our accounting up to date and things like the budget which will be before you at the August twentieth meeting. So the purpose, since their contract, the one contract with them expired at the end of June, I am proposing that we divide it into three separate contracts or whichever ones that you would like to keep. I hope that you've looked over their scope of services that each one provides, which is different, but it is a cost savings of ten dollars an hour to thirty dollars an hour, so that will all add up. And they are not for a long extended period of time. So anyway, I hope that you looked at their scope of service so you can determine which contracts you want to keep or all of them. Platinum Consulting Group is the one that does the main CPA stuff, that's Cindy Berium, and that's a definite must, in my opinion. Local and regional governments' services authorities, which would be some of the stuff that Gina's already been doing, she would continue on, finish our budget cycle, and then I've listed a couple of the starting things that she could do to help us continue. The other one is Urban Futures and that is Mike Bush and he has a whole list of things on his scope of service. So I need direction.
You don't handle them separately or collectively?
We could do it separately if you'd like, Ole.
I'll entertain a record motion. I will move to direct the city manager enter an agreement with Platinum.
I will second.
Yeah, we'll just do a vote on that one.
I just wonder if any discussion?
No. Any discussion or comments from the public?
Any discussion or comments from the public? Wasn't sure how this was gonna go. Why don't you just roll out your whole analysis at once? And then that way we can either agree or disagree or create dialogue.
I think this way it'll be smoother.
Okay, alright.
Agreement by agreement.
Let's go agreement by agreement. And did you have any changes or additions that you would like to make or suggest to make to the Platinum Consulting Group document?
No, unless you have some.
The one item that I didn't see is party to this as we go through budget planning and whatnot, there was, this Urban Futures one, there was a... One of the bullet points in phase two was to identify opportunity of revenue enhancement. I think another element of that is to also get rid of wasteful spending. And that wasn't addressed in either of these three documents. So if that could be incorporated in the scope of work within Platinum? So I think that we've all identified areas where we can... And it may be just the role of the city manager to do that, that would be fine. It's not all about, it's not just all about making money, it's also appropriately spending.
I agree with that, I'm just not sure that the accounting department is the most prudent firm to...
And that may very well be the case, but when I saw it in the Urban Futures where they're trying to generate, where they're trying to come up with revenue opportunities, I thought I'd make a note of that. Yeah, so I'm good with the rest of the Platinum document. Is that a motion in a second?
Yes.
Okay, call for a vote on the Platinum document.
All ayes. Which one would you like to take next, Urban Futures or...?
Let's take Urban Futures next. I don't know with where we are currently with Cindy doing what she's doing and with what we're already doing with Platinum, if we get any real benefit from the document that's currently in front of us from Urban Futures. It's of value to us.
Unless these guys are the right guys to look at some cost-saving options.
We could do two separate things, like a cost analysis can be done, maybe a consultant would be more expensive than if we went to some, a firm that's all they do is cost analysis. We could price that out to see which is a cheaper way to go. And a salary survey also, which we haven't done since 2006, which is supposed to be done how many years?
Salary survey's been a while, but we do have a closed session item on human resources risk management that requests for proposal, ask for proposals, at least in terms of the personnel area of cost savings areas.
So maybe it would be premature to pull the trigger on Urban Futures and we could revisit it later?
Okay. So do not enter into a contract with them at this time? Okay.
Can we have a, since we did a motion on the last one, can we have that?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Comment from the public?
Anyone in the audience care to comment? They want to get to the motorcycle race.
Yeah, they do.
I mean, the airshow.
All ayes. And then local and regional government services. And really it would be the local part of it because that's the municipality part. And I forgot to put on the scope of service about the continuation of the budget cycle. This is Gina.
Yeah. Should've just written Gina on the front page.
Any comments on this? Anyone care to entertain a motion then on the agreement this far?
So moved.
I'll second. Anyone in the audience care to comment? Who are you still moving?
Yeah, why are you moving?
Have the city manager execute the contract with local and regional government services authorities.
Call for a vote, please.
All ayes.
Item number eighteen.
Number eighteen is on the agenda again this evening at the request of a couple of council members. And I did get, last Thursday I sent an email to Mr. Tekinoff and he gave me the special event permit application the next morning. I sent it to the outriggers, specifically to Billy, and I had left a message with Jeannie and I think Billy and Jeannie spoke because then I got that long email this afternoon from Billy. And you have it all before you.
And a little bit more information, under the city's current ordinance, what happens is if there is a conflict in two events, the city manager makes a determination if those events can be held on the same day or within the same weekend. And any party that's not happy with that determination can appeal it to the city council. And when there's an appeal to the city council, the city council is kind of acting like a jury. And so what I would advise you tonight is any discussion should be directed toward getting information to allow the city manager to make a determination. But in terms of your own thoughts, because if this is denied or if someone's, or granted and someone's unhappy with it and they appeal to the city council, you'll be acting as judges. And so if you make strong comments or statements or, you know, that would impugn, that would disqualify you from ruling on any appeal if this were in fact appealed to the city council. So that's legalese to say...
So no sense having it on the agenda?
Well, no, unless there's some information that the parties want to provide in terms of giving additional information or the council would like to get an update as to where the parties are in their discussions on whether we should have this, what their status is in terms of working together.
Was your show copied on the email from the outriggers?
Was who copied?
Their show, Dan? Do you know?
No.
What?
I did not, I got it this afternoon and printed it out. I apologized to Dan, I can give you a copy of it. And actually, I think it went to Gabby and then she printed it out.
Yeah, I got the letter right here. So I mean...
Yes, please.
I'm not for this at all. This is a huge conflict here. The, Jeannie Barrett was in the back of the room on the last council meeting and I kept talking to her about, come on, tell me about it. And she wouldn't do anything. Later on, she talked to someone else and said, boy, that's a shame, I really didn't want this to happen. And there, you know, the outriggers, they put their application in a year ahead of time and this is the fifty-fourth anniversary of their crossing. They're trying to be as politically correct as they can be and they figure that members of the city council really want both of these events to happen. And so they were trying to be nice and just say, well, we'll work it out. But to me, somewhere in this letter, they need the NAC people, N-A-C, that's the one that puts on the outriggers. They bring sixty to seventy, sixty canoes and seventy escort boats over here and that fills the harbor up. They bring two thousand people in because they've got sixty boats with nine people in each boat coming over and one way and then they have a whole new group of people that came in the night before that paddle boats back to Newport. And the big thing is the moorings. You know, there's one obvious thing that I saw in here where the mooring that's used by the Balboa boat was gonna be used by the outriggers and then they were told that the air people, I had, let's see, yeah, it was right here. The note that came from the head guy of Newport Aquatic Center and he said something like, we also have secured the Flyer mooring, two fifty that allows us space for six escort boats, but that has been requested to be used to accommodate the flying albatross seaplane. So they lose that mooring that takes care of a lot of boats. And I went through the process with them one year. Came over with them with the escort boats and went back. And it's a huge event. And so I don't know, my feeling is...
Well, remember, we're not expressing feelings because no decision has been made yet.
I'm sorry?
As I indicated, this item is not for the council for approval because no decision by the city manager has been made yet on this. We're just getting information from the parties as to where they are with it. But remember, if one of the parties doesn't like the decision, then they appeal to you and then that's the time when you guys can give your strong opinions, yes or no on it.
Okay, so you don't want...
In order so that you are not prejudicing your position on it, it's appropriate to have the parties give you information tonight as to express where we are, provide it to Denise, no decision's been made on it. If she makes a decision and someone doesn't like it, then it's gonna be appealed to the next city council meeting probably, if it's a quick decision.
So let me do this then, let me ask Dan some questions. Dan, come on up to the podium here for a minute, let's get around some of this.
Dan Tekinoff, three fifteen, Whitley.
Dan, I appreciate you being here. Let me run through a handful of questions. So you haven't had the opportunity to see this email or you did see the email?
I did see the email.
What are the ramifications on your airshow if your airshow does not take place on that Saturday but takes place on that Sunday?
It will not happen.
That wasn't my question. What are the ramifications on your airshow? What does it mean to your airshow? What happens?
The primary sponsor has made it very clear that they will not participate on Sunday the eighth.
And that primary sponsorship participation is exactly what?
Is Shaden Products. And it's a twenty thousand dollar sponsorship, title sponsorship.
So our current challenge is a twenty thousand dollar title sponsorship?
Correct.
Are there any other ramifications that we need to know about if it was on a different day?
Performers, traveling, there could be some problems with the emergency sheriffs and lifeguard. There's a whole list of ramifications that would be a problem. I would like to say that we have made a concerted effort and I appreciate your concerns, Ralph, about the moorings. I met with Billy and Bud Hall in Newport Beach last Friday and we discussed every element of the event and how it would dovetail into each other, from using our broadcast system for their music, their beer garden for our people, their people, postponing their award ceremonies until after the event. We even suggested in closing the airbox for two hours so that they can come through the harbor. They said that they'd like to go through Lover's Cove and we felt that would be fine. I feel that we've worked out all the details and it is difficult. When I sat down with Wayne Griffin at the Chamber of Commerce, I felt that when he announced that there was nothing going on on that weekend, we both decided that that was the perfect time. There was a date change, there was a cancellation, we thought Sunday would work, the sponsor said, no, that's a go-home day, Saturday is the day we need to have that, otherwise we're out of the deal. Both Steve Montague and Rock Goslin have been working diligently in securing moorings from the tuna club. I've even offered to waive the albatross. Say if we cannot guarantee you five additional moorings or more, we won't bring the albatross in, we can waive the albatross off. They said, we want the albatross there, we want a photo op, we want our canoes up alongside of it. So we felt that last Friday that we were going forward. I wasn't aware of this meeting until this morning. It was, the email was dated last night, I got it this morning. And I got the email from Billy Whitford, directly from him. So I feel we've worked out the details. I don't see a conflict. I think his letter states that if we have to work together, we will. It is unfortunate that we are on top of each other, last year we had the half marathon. And I would say that that is logistically much more difficult to work with. And I would say that that is logistically much more difficult to work with than, than the harbor department and the moorings. But we, I expect, and Rock and Stable assure me that we can probably get at least 10 to 15 additional moorings from other entities in town and from the tuna club.
Is there any clarification that Denise needs?
We're back. Two weeks ago, I think it was two weeks ago, I gave you my word, I gave Jeannie my word that we would make it work for them, and we will. And I'm giving you my word again. We're going to get moorings. We're going to get, we're going to make it happen. If we have to go through and ask people for side ties on the morning of the thing to get all of their boats in so they don't go to White Slending like they have been, then we will do that. Because I think it's important that a historical event, as I said last time, happens. Yes, it's going to be a little rough and we'll have to move around and, and adjust. But I think at the end, the end result, I think will be a very memorable experience for the community, for the visitors, for the outriggers, and for the pilots, and all their family and friends. I think it's going to be fantastic. In fact, it might even be better than fantastic. Having the outriggers in the water, having their pictures taken next to a floating plane. You know, I think, I think it's an opportunity for, for this whole thing to get more color. You know, you got, I think we should do it with a cruise ship out there. But the harbor master didn't think that was a good idea. But I think we should. So it's too late, really, to move this year. It really is. There's a lot going on. Dan really wasn't thinking about everything, but there are so many details. If you can't do it on the 7th, we probably aren't going to, it won't, won't be able to happen. Sponsor's just a small part of it. They, all the performing pilots all have schedules. They go to air show, to air show, to air show. So, you know, they're, they've blocked out their time for this trip. Some of them are heading down to Mexico. Some of them are going up to Reno right after. Some of them are going back east from here. And we do have some really, really good performers in this show. So I know that the discussion tonight is specifically about outrigger operation versus the air show. And, and I feel really bad that it's, that we're where we are. But give us a chance to make it work. I'm pretty confident we can pull this off and it'll be, it'll be good. So, I promise. Thank you.
Thanks.
Rock?
I'm listening.
Rock Goslin, 318 Whitley. Denise, for your ability to move forward, you have watched the outriggers come over here annually, as we all have. And one of the things that you're seeing right here is there's four of us in this room that are going to help secure moorings for the outriggers this year. Every year before, it's been on the shoulders of Brian Bray and his staff. So we're going to make their job easier. I've had my contacts, either they already have or are going to be calling Brian direct. They go, "What, what do we do? Do we give you a letter?" I go, "No. You call Brian Bray and you say that your mooring is available either for side tie or for use as Brian sees fit. Just call, call Kate, call Brian direct." And he's never had that help before. So that'll, you know, take a load off of Brian's mind. And so he can concentrate on helping the canoers in other operations that he normally does. I, I feel bad also that, you know, we wound up in this situation. Again, as we discussed last time, we're here. Dan tried to pull the plug on this because things weren't moving forward and everybody else that was involved in the periphery. Says, "No, we're, we're carrying this cart with us." Every event that this town now hangs its hat on and looks at as indispensable to our community as cultural or economic, had rough starts. And the outriggers had rough starts. The outriggers have had setbacks. Jazz Festival had rough starts and setbacks. I, I wound up taking my boat to LA and all of a sudden I was called at about midnight, "Can I, can I get across the channel and get some of my equipment because the boat that was doing it broke down?" This is the first year. First year, they almost lost some pants. They, we've all had rough starts in the events that we're trying to do. And next year, we won't step on somebody else's toes. Things will now move and progress further. Look, look the fits and starts that the Catalina Grand Prix has had over the last three years now. I think that Denise, you can feel confident in making a decision to allow both of these events move forward. I don't believe that there will be a, an appeal from the outrigger canoers. I hope not. I hope they've been placated enough so far. As we get closer to the date, more and more people will know what their schedules are and give me a definitive answer on their mooring instead of, "Let's see what is happening next month." I don't know. I'd hate to think that we'd be voted against, decided against at an administrative level. Because this would be the pivotal year to make this an event that the island can look up to. Thanks.
I think it's unfortunate that we've gotten into this situation for the second year in a row. There's a proper process and I'm, it's, it's very frustrating, Dan, that the process isn't followed. Now, you said you contacted the chamber and, and I'm not disputing that you did or didn't. The chamber, we worked in, we work in tandem together with the special events. And there's a box that you mark off that says Wrigley Stage. And that's, that permit comes from them. So they know who's got an event that weekend. We were even unaware that there was even going to be an air show until somebody brought us a little, that little card that you had at the hotels. It's very frustrating that, it's an awesome event. You know how I love it. And so I'm not, we're not trying to stop a fantastic event. It's just very unfortunate that we have these two conflicting things. And I have concern with the email from Billy today that if they, and they can't wait till the 11th hour, but if, if we can't guarantee them the moorings for their boats, he says it's, it's not a go. I'm pretty sure that's what the email said, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And that's, that's worrisome, but.
Please?
Yes.
Excuse me? Hi. We, we don't need the stage. We're not conflicting with them for Wrigley Stage.
Oh, no. The stage is, is not an issue at all. I'm just saying that the chamber would have known that there was an event happening that weekend. So I, I'm sorry that Dan was given misinformation that that weekend was open when it had been booked.
Yeah, it's, it's really frustrating. Yeah, it's very frustrating. And I know it's frustrating that our permit application is at the last minute, you know. I don't know why, but.
And I had contacted Avalon Fire Station today, LA County. They said they hadn't even been notified yet. We sent your stuff to the sheriffs. So, Dan, have you on your emergency preparedness plan? Have you been in contact with all these entities?
With the sheriff's department, the county fire?
LA County Fire?
The whole plan's written.
That's it?
Oh, yeah.
The plan that he wrote for you guys last year?
We've got the lifeguards contracted and the sheriff's dive team coming. It's all inked in. For Gary Black, I mean, that's what Captain Black told me.
That's Captain Black?
Right.
Because he wrote it last year?
I'm sorry?
He wrote the emergency plan last year?
Yes.
Captain Black did?
Yes, he did.
So it's the same plan?
Same plan, just changing a few things around it.
But have you contacted them this year, though?
Oh, yeah. Absolutely. Sure. I just talked to him three days ago.
His plan is complete.
Yeah. So a lot of this, a few people have come up to me and, and the same feeling I'm getting from last year. He said, "You're not having an air show. We've already been told you're not having an air show. You've already been denied." So this is, this is Avalon, you know, we all live here. So Captain Black is totally on board. He's already submitted to his chief. He's already contracted the Baywatch lifeguard dive team. We've already got the sheriff's dive team going to come and do a training to even be here on standby. We've already got security for the perimeter by way of the jet skis with special flags. We've got color markings for the box. We've got quite a few extra performers over than last year. So the program will flow a little quicker and be busier. Even though it doesn't look like we're very organized, we've, we've actually accomplished quite a bit.
Anyone else have any questions? Thank you, guys. The city managers report?
No.
Scott, anything to report?
No. Council members? Possibility of changing the second meeting in September because three of us are going to the L.A. California City Council Conference. So we would need to find a new date.
I would suggest maybe Monday, the 16th. I work for everybody.
That was it? Uli?
I'm sure we all got copies of a letter from a concerned citizen about covering a bunch of stuff. People don't understand that the cease and desist order does not allow us to wash the streets with the regularity we did in the past because we're trying to keep our bay clean. It's just, I don't, we do need to keep our city clean. We do need to have our city staff, they see stuff, pick it up and throw it away. We also need to have the city staff, remember that they're walking around in a uniform that says City of Avalon on it. And if they're goofing off while they're supposed to be working, we hear about it. And just make them cognizant of the fact that the public's out there looking for stuff and just, you know.
Is, is that the correspondence that referenced harbor stuff, too?
Yeah.
A letter's being written. It will be from the mayor. Addressing something, I'm not sure. That we're sorry they're displeased.
Yes, but.
Certain actions were taken.
And we are working with, you know, in our, about getting a proposal to get a little machine over here to clean our sidewalks and Preston Avenue and stuff like that so we can clean it up somehow.
Well, they had, they had a little machine out the other day cleaning the sidewalk. But that, that does remind me of something that I had talked to you about. And I doubt if the youth of Avalon are watching this meeting.
They tuned off after the medical marijuana.
They were open. But I, I would like the youth, and when I say youth, I mean, yeah, teen, mid twenties, to understand that we are a resort community that makes a living from people coming over and enjoying themselves and relaxing and sleeping. I want the youth of Avalon to enjoy their youth. But when you're having a party with 50 people at Buena Vista Point with the music blaring and the sheriff's department comes up and asks you to turn the music down, that means turn the music down, not 20 minutes later, after the deputy is gone, turn the music back up. It just seems like it's becoming more prevalent of the youth doing this. And I'm, I'm telling you, if I can hear it in my living room, which I can't hear a lot in my living room, then it's loud. And there is a noise, noise ordinance that on weekends, you're not supposed to be making a lot of noise after 11 o'clock. I don't care if you're down there partying. I don't care if you're down there drinking. But it's the noise that is annoying. And that it's annoying to the visitor and it's annoying to the local. So just show a little respect to those people that are coming over and, you know, making your life a good life.
Maybe picking up the empties. Maybe picking up the empties and putting in the trash cans.
And that would be nice, too, is to, to pick up your trash when you're done.
Ralph, anything?
No, I just go along with them. I've had more complaints this year about a dirty town than I've ever heard for a long time. It's all.
The cease and desist order is what's keeping us from rinsing down our streets on Friday like we're accustomed.
They are still because it goes into our low-flow diverters.
Right.
The salt water on Front Street.
Right, correct.
But they're only doing it once a week. Perhaps they would do it more frequently.
I think maybe we picked that up a little bit because it, it does look dirty downtown.
I'm not arguing.
And, and to clarify, I wouldn't say it's the cease and desist. I think it's the state stormwater permit. The new permit that we're subject to, that the city's never been subject to, which prohibits the washing of streets in such a way that the runoff goes into the bay.
Okay. And our water doesn't go into the bay?
No.
It goes into the low?
From the, from the low flow, no, it doesn't. No.
Okay, so we could, we could clean that up a little bit.
Does the city own a pressure washer, mobile pressure washer?
Yes.
Also Denise, I, I heard that the sweeper's not running on Fridays. Is there a reason for that?
I'll check into that, Richard. I don't know.
And if any day it ought to go out, it ought to be a Friday before the weekend, I would think. But I, I'm, I'm not sure. I just heard that.
Was running today.
Okay, since we're at it, I appreciate the lines at the mole.
You already talked to me.
Okay. I'm, I'm doing this for the benefit of everybody else who parks out there. The lines are in a really bad diagonal direction. And they're, they're too close together in that you can't get out of your vehicles.
Well, it took 14 people to paint it.
Hey, I'm just happy the lines are there. And since I'm on my soapbox, the red line where it says, "No unloading or stopping" means no unloading or stopping. And the poor code enforcement people will give you a ticket. I'm done.
Again.
So my turn. Two letters we need to send. One to Vons. We need to circle the wagon again on the store condition and throw in there the whole public information system. Jen's idea there. And the other, let's offer a letter to Edison. And let's set some roundtable discussion on how to better manage our water utility. And Rock is absolutely right. We need to absolutely hold hands in this and solve it as a community, not just point the finger at Edison and make them fix it. We have that opportunity. Rock, would you like to be part of that? Thank you. You do. I appreciate that. Anyone else on the council want to participate in that process?
I love water.
You love water. Fantastic.
This is old water.
Old water, new water, salt water.
And last but not least, back to the cleanliness thing. There was a period of time where we had our contractor picking up trash with a rolling piece of equipment rather than using his vehicle on Front Street.
Juan?
Amundo?
Amundo was not permitted to use his vehicle on Front Street. Is that accurate?
That is correct.
Okay.
I just spoke to him a few weeks ago about not doing it.
One of the things I identified as we were going through this process is that there are strategic cans around town that I think need to be maybe picked up more often than others. There are a few that are consistently overflowing. So maybe if we could kind of do a spot check and try to figure out what those hot zones are and notify him of those hot zones.
He'd probably be able to tell us exactly which ones are.
But.
Do you want more cans in those spots or?
Well, I, I think that we need to either have that part of the contract or make that be part of common sense. Because there are a few in town and I'll, I'm going to point out one right off the get-go is right in front of Boloff's. Anytime I look at that can, it doesn't matter whether it's 9:30 in the morning or 3:00 in the afternoon, it's always overflowing.
One in front of Leo's?
One in front of Leo's is the same way. So if it means we're not giving him enough resources of cans, or I don't know how that process works, but I think that if we. how that process works, but I think that if we either increase efficiencies, that's gonna keep things from blowing out of the cans and people march by it. You could bend over and pick it up, but there's not gonna be any place to put it.
With covers so that those big black birds don't get in there and eat things.
Exactly. Okay. We've got a couple of closed session items this evening. Scott?
Yeah, we have four closed session items. Two with real property negotiators. The first one is regarding the race course for the proposed Catalina Island Grand Prix two thousand and thirteen, including the hour trail. Negotiators are Denise and myself. The negotiating party is Santa Catalina Island Company. Second is for property at three twenty Sumner Avenue. Negotiators are Denise and myself. And negotiating parties, we have two parties actually, Mike Alniota and Ilal Katib. Then we have two public employee appointments, uh, human resources risk manager and city
Did you get any of the invitations from us?
Okay, we've returned from closed session. Would you care to report back, Scott?
No reportable action. Lots of fun talk.
Okay. No other items were discussed and this meeting is adjourned.
Okay. Good night.